Good morning, everyone. It is now time to open our meeting of the San Angelo City Council for July the 2nd, 2013, and we welcome you here this morning. Our preacher didn't show up this morning, so I'm going to open up with the prayer. Please indulge me. Let's bow and pray, please. Our dear God and our Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can gather together here this morning in a peaceful assembly to discuss and to take action on the things that need to be done in our wonderful city. And we thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to live in this city, and we are very appreciative of all the many wonderful people that make it up. I would ask you, dear Father, this morning, to give us wisdom as council members, to give us strength, to give us courage, and to give us patience, and to give us the ability to deal with the problems that concern all of the citizens of our community. Be with us, guide us, guard us, love us, forgive us. It is in the name of Jesus that we pray. And if you would, please, Ms. Carley Buckes, come to the front. Carley's going to help us with our pledge this morning, and Carley is the child of Jamie Buckes, who is in our finance department, and we're glad to have you here this morning. You ready? If you would, stand while we pledge allegiance to the flag. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Great job.
I love it when they stand up and speak loudly and clearly. That's exactly the way it should have been done. I thank you very much, Carley. We now have some proclamations. And the first proclamation will be to the Texas Hunger Initiative Kids Eat Free Program will be accepted by Mary Herbert, the regional director, and Betty Testin, the Child Hunger Outreach Specialist with Texas Hunger Initiative of the San Angelo office. Welcome this morning.
Morning.
It's good to have you. And I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas the Texas Hunger Initiative is a collaborative effort both statewide and locally, our goal is to end hunger in Texas through policy, education, research, grassroots organizing, and community development. And whereas San Angelo is one of 12 cities selected as an outreach center to establish a regional office to recruit and train community partners to identify residents who could be eligible for the state's supplemental nutrition assistance program and who, by participating, will allow more access points for residents to apply for benefits. And whereas in Tom Green County, more than one in four families with children had times during the last year when there was not enough money to buy food. That's 5,400 households in San Angelo. And whereas the goal for the Tom Green County Hunger Initiative for 213 is to feed more children during the summer school when school is not in session. In San Angelo, over 8,600 students receive free or reduced meals when school is in session, more than 60 percent of all of our students. And whereas after summer school ends on June 28th, local churches, ministries, organizations, businesses, and numerous individuals have committed to provide meals in eight San Angelo neighborhoods and at one site in Carlsbad in July and in August. Now therefore, I, Duane Morrison, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, and on behalf of the city council do hereby proclaim the second day of June 2013 as July 213 Kids Eat Summer Meals Initiative Month. Thank you. You have the microphone.
If you want to get a picture.
I'd love to. Is anybody, you don't talk, you don't say anything?
Yes, Mary will. Mary wants to get a picture for us. Hold that moment.
We want to thank everyone for this proclamation. We're real excited that this is beginning the fourth summer of our Kids Eat Free Summer Meal Program. We have fed lots of children last summer. We fed over 33,000 meals in July and August. So we are excited to be starting that program again. Then we are also excited, this is the first year that we have been chosen, San Angelo has been chosen as the regional office for the Texas Hunger Initiative. There are 12 regional offices that have been created around the state of Texas, and we are one of them. So we will be working with agencies and churches to try to put together a partnership where there will be an opportunity for more people that might be eligible for benefits, to have more places that they can go to to apply and fill out their application for these benefits. So we do appreciate this, and thank you very much for having us today.
And now we have some recognitions. Cut these out of order. There we go. I found it. I got it back in my. Water Burger Restaurant will be next. The Water Burger at 4646 Nickherbacher Road, by accepted by Eleanor Hutton and Ann Mesa, manager. Good morning.
Eleanor couldn't be here.
Well, it's a pleasure to have you here. Let me read this recognition. And I'm sorry, this is sometimes on your debut, you have problems. The wording here is to recognize the Water Burger Restaurant at 4646 Nickherbacher Road for generously donating 75 meals of hamburgers, fries, and drinks to all of the first responders and evacuees from neighboring property during the June 13th response to a hydrochloric acid spill. Although the incident swamped the restaurant and its parking lot, we were all impressed by how extremely courteous, professional, cooperative, and generous all the Water Burger employees were. And then we've got a public information here, the fire department, they've responded to a hydrochloric acid spill. So we thank you, and would be like to offer you this, just to tell you that we did. You want to speak?
Thank you for recognizing us. We're always happy to serve our community any way we can. It's the Water Burger difference. And I was there that day, and it was a quite interesting experience, I must say. But we really appreciate the recognition. Thank you very much.
Let's see now. Next in our recognitions, we have the City of San Angelo for receiving the Texas Comptroller Silver Leadership Circle Award. Bill Smith is our chief accountant. Laura Brooks, our senior budget analyst, and Morgan Chegwin is our buddies at management. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just going to read this one, Alicia. There's a recognition here, both from the state and also from the city. We're going to start with the state here. I am pleased to inform you that the City of San Angelo has earned the 2013 Silver Leadership Circle Award. Your application scored 14 points of 20 possible points on our ratings criteria to earn this award. Your listing on the Texas Transparency website now displays the silver seal to indicate that you have received this award. Enclosed is your copy of a Leadership Circle Award certificate. You will also receive a digital seal that you may post on your website. Congratulations on your success in moving forward on financial transparency and joining our Leadership Circle, and this is signed, Susan Combs, Texas Comptroller. Very good. Appreciate it. And we have this Texas Comptroller Leadership Circle Silver award that will go to our finance department and from the City of San Angelo, because we also want to recognize them. It's commending the Budget Division of the City of San Angelo for doing more, doing it better, and exceeding our expectations. Your high standards inspire us all. And you get that one.
Oh, thank you.
Go get some extra pictures. Good morning.
We just are very grateful to the state comptroller and to the city council for recognizing that we hope to make our financials easy to understand for your average citizen and for everybody out there, so we are accountable to y'all. We appreciate it.
Let's get a picture. And let me give you a letter from the comptroller.
Awesome.
That's got it.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, the very next part of our agenda. The next part of our agenda is when the public gets an opportunity to speak, if they have an issue or an item that they need to speak to. And let me read this. It says, "The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment." So we'll start with the public. If there is anything that anyone has to say or wants to bring to the attention of the council, now is your opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
And identify yourself, please, ma'am.
My name is Glenda Harbert. I am a leader in WTOS. I am also a co-pastor at St. Paul Presbyterian Church. Want to welcome almost all of our new council to leadership. And just to let you know that we are excited about y'all being, working together with us and working in wisdom and leadership with the city, and that we keep you and I keep you in my prayers.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that. Yes, ma'am. Come forward and identify yourself. You get five minutes to speak. If you need more, then we'll talk about it in five minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jan Bartlett. I am here on behalf of my family. My father, Rich Joe Bennett, owns a property over on Lake Nazworthy. I just really wanted to come this morning to urge the council to, from conversations that I've had with Mrs. Ann Pierce and Cynthia Pease in the last few weeks, have been told the process that it stands at this point on renewing property leases and possible sale of those properties. I have a picture of my father's property. I'd like for you to just pass it through and take a couple minutes. This property originally was in my family since the, probably before I was born in the 50s, my grandfather purchased or leased the property from the City of San Angelo. It at that time was just a boathouse over the water. In the early 60s, it needed to be moved out onto the bank as per the city's recommendations at that time. And it was a pink corrugated tin boathouse, and stayed that way for many, many, many years when I was a little kid. My father and mother, when they retired back in the 80s, spent a good bit of their retirement money in redoing this property and making it what it appears to be like home now. And I'm just here to ask the council to please understand that a lot of the property owners in that region right now are in their upper 70s, as my dad is. And we are very concerned that the amount of the increase in the lot lease would not be possible for our family to meet. And probably the purchase of that property, as far as financial, is out of the question. I would just urge you to please consider that the people that originally built homes on the lake perhaps be given some consideration and make some other opportunities for them to keep their homes. That's basically what I came to say today. If there's anything that you might be able to do to help our family and others that are in that situation, I would love to talk to you.
Mr. Mayor, may I approach?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you referring to the interest rate, the proposal, the interest rate that is in there to purchase or release?
From what I understand, when your lease expires, the present lease that you have now, the city will appraise the lot, and you are to pay 8 percent of that appraised value yearly.
Okay, yes, ma'am. And if I may, the council, we have discussed this and talked about it, and we have not brought it back out into general session, but we are aware, and I for one feel it's way too high and egregious, and we are trying to address it now.
I appreciate that. My father is on a fixed income. By the time we pay for his expenses and bills on the home, he basically has less than $100 a month left. So we just would like for you to understand that so many of the people that originally built homes on those lake lots that, you know, pretty much built that property and to the beautiful lake property that it is now cannot afford these new rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bartlett.
And maybe we'll meet again.
Step up and identify yourself, Jerry C.
Good morning, council. My name is Jerry C., and I'm one of the leaders of WTOS. And I appreciate and am very pleased to see all of you again. And congratulations, Ms. Farmer, for returning and all your new people. And I see we have a new mayor, and Johnny, you have a new neighbor to the other side of you now. I thank all of you for coming, for all your service that you've done for us. Now, we're starting off another session. One of the things that I would hope that you remember this time would be our 19th Street project that was on the board before. It seemed to have fallen off the board somewhere during the past months. That's one of the most dangerous streets in San Angelo. And during the time that it had been worked on, Craig Myers and I had walked the streets along with one of the other city personnel. And since then, we found out there's no easement along 19th Street. We went and we polled the people along 19th Street, the property owners, and the property owner is willing to donate enough easement of their property, they're going to donate their property to the city for sidewalks. Now, we had gotten to that point, but there was some reason or other that it fell off the board, I guess, since, whatever, I'm not going to try to explain that. I do not know. But that fell off the board, and then there's another problem that had been brought to my attention just recently from the rains. We had talked about before about the sewage down the lower part of Blackshear, about the backups and stuff before when we had the rains before. It's been a dry season, and there hadn't been any problems. We thought the problem was solved, but it was just because it was a dry season. Now that it has rained, there's been water backups and stuff on people's lines. It was cleaned up by the city the next morning, which I thank the city for doing that. But those problems still exist, and since you're a new council, I would really appreciate for those projects to be brought back and carried on to completion. And I'm glad to see all of you back, that's back, and your new faces, and I hope you work really well together and for the betterment of the city. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Jerry, would it be all right if we also added permanent bathrooms at the Martin Luther King Park?
Yes, if, if they're maintained, only if they're maintained. We don't need any more problems down there. If they're maintained and we have security on them. We do not need problems down there. We have no problems down there. We've been working on them, and we've worked with the city and individuals that's in that area. And if you've noticed, that monuments down there, it has not been one mark put on that Martin Luther King monument since it's been there. Not one pencil mark, not, no damage whatsoever. People have been taking care of that, and I'm sure we will take care of those restrooms if you put them there. But we need everybody doing their part. The citizens are ready to do their part because of the work that the city has done before, and all of the citizens in the city has come together. That was the legacy left before, and Ms. Farmer was part of that, and you were part of that, too. And I hope that's maintained. Thank you, sir. And I would appreciate if you did do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Good morning, Ms. West.
Good morning. I'm Ann West. I'm here on behalf of Friends of Fairmount and Fairmount Cemetery this morning, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am here this morning to remind you that last year, we made a presentation in which our master plan was reviewed and phase one was discussed. In phase one, we are discussing and talking about the main entry and the construction of a columbarium. A columbarium is a structure which houses and memorializes the cremains of a loved one and also generates revenue for the city. Respectfully, we would like to ask that you consider funding part one, phase one, of our master plan with any discretionary funds that might possibly come available as you go into the budget discussions over the next several weeks. Please remember that phase one addresses an issue with safety entering and exiting the cemetery and also safeguards the financial stability of Fairmount Cemetery and extends its life expectancy. We feel that this is important not only to you and the cemetery being a city-owned business, but also to the citizens of San Angelo and the families of the more than 33,000 buried there within historic Fairmount Cemetery. And that's all I have for you today. Just please don't forget us.
Would it be possible, Ms. West, if maybe y'all could come back two or three meetings from now and kind to give us an update and a presentation? Give us some figures?
Absolutely. We would love to.
Give us some information so that we could kind of put this together and learn more about it?
Absolutely. Absolutely, we would love to.
Is there anyone on the council that would like to put this on a future agenda?
Yes. We have been presented the figures, estimates. Of course, there, last year was your presentation, but we are in the budget talks supposedly supposed to be starting this month and meeting, and I would like to have their proposal that they brought to us, I still have my copy, put on the workshop meetings so that we can discuss the possibility of addition of the columbarium and possibly some more land.
Very well. We'll see if we can
Thank you.
Get some public support behind you.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. West, I just want to add, from visiting with you a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about an artist possibly, and I have been in touch, and if I
Wonderful.
If I don't call you today after the meeting, please call me, and I'll give you the news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West. Anyone else? If you would, please, ma'am, state your name and your business.
Good morning. My name is Ann Joseph. Mr. Morrison, congratulations
Thank you very much, ma'am.
On appointment as mayor. I'm here about two different things. The first is more of a safety issue. In recent times, obviously, we've had a lot more traffic, and I've noticed a marked change in how the traffic flow goes. And particularly, it seems like on northbound, southbound Bryant, people are anxious to get to the other side, and they blow through, and I'm wondering, where are the cops? So my first question is, could law enforcement perhaps keep a closer eye on north, southbound Bryant and the Loop? Because some of the bigger trucks that are, I think, relating to the booming oil industry in our area are the ones that are the transgressors. And if there were an accident because of their size and weight, you know, it would be all the worse. Tied in with that, I've noticed this for a while, but I think it's more important now that it be addressed even more so. All along northbound, southbound Bryant at set locations, there are obligatory one-way signage, there is one-way signage, for alleys and streets coming on Bryant. But there are a few places, notably just coming down here, I noticed at Tuig and southbound Bryant, if you're coming from the east on Tuig, I don't think there's any one-way signage there. And my concern is, well, I've already experienced three times in the past six months, as I'm approaching the area where just south of Houston Hart, between there and the post office, people pulling out of Grandies, out of Burger King, and they're heading north on southbound Bryant. And maybe, I don't know if the laws would allow, but could even one-way signage be put across from those commercial exits so that people who aren't familiar with our town would know this is one way going that way, and they don't turn north? Also relating to signage, for a long time, and about three years ago, I even called the city's department that handles this, it's bothered me that there are a lot of intersections where there is no signage, no yield, no stop. Now predominantly, it's in what would be, I think, identified as the poorer areas, but I still think that some type of signage ought to be put there. People rate that kind of governance for their traffic flow, and it shouldn't just be left up to whatever happens, happens. So that was my second question. And, okay, the third one was, could the law enforcement address speeding traffic? And the final, the other issue I wanted to ask, our point I wanted to inquire about concerns me regarding the water issues that we're facing in our area of Texas relating to the use of water by the oil industries. I've seen on the news where some of the smaller communities are being adversely affected, and I just wanted to put the idea out. Could the water from the line coming from, is it the Hickory Aquifer? Could that be utilized by San Angelo to somehow make available to the oil industry? Could the contract or whatever we have set up with them be sold to them instead of using the water that the smaller communities are losing now? Until such time as the state does something, somebody's got to do something, so I'm just concerned about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. We appreciate it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Ma'am?
Ms. Joseph? I wanted to answer one of your questions, which I thought was an excellent question, having to do with the oilfield use of Hickory water. I thought that was a great idea myself, and I was so proud of myself of thinking of it a while back. But I went to the district court judgment against the City of San Angelo and the district court of Concho County, and we were tied up in such a manner by that district court judgment, which is contractual in nature, that we're not able at this point in time to use that water for oilfield operations. I wish we could. I wish there's some way we could modify the judgment, but I don't believe the landowner down there will do that, and so unfortunately, your good idea will probably never come to fruition.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but those that are saying nay need to come up with a solution, then, is all I can say, because it's a problem that's just starting, and this is only going to get a lot worse. And the people who know a lot need to put their heads together and get a solution, but thanks for telling me what the possibility is.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to request, I think Rick's Overseas or whatever, the Streets Department, and if they could do, no, okay, Michael, is that yours? Well, whoever
Daniel.
If could look at it, I have noticed we have a lack of signs, informational signs. And as our traffic is increasing here in San Angelo, where signs are needed that says no through traffic, no truck traffic, we just need to take a look at it because it's increasingly a problem, if you would.
And it wouldn't hurt to get with Chief Vaskis and Chief Martinez, and she may have a point on the enforcement as well. And this just brings me to another point. I'm going to throw in a commercial here, but this is exactly what this council is looking for from the public. We don't know the answers, but many of you might. So if we can work this together, if the public will help us, if you will support us, encourage us, give us information, together collectively, we will be able to solve these problems. So I thank you, Ms. Joseph, for coming forward. Next. Anybody else want to address the council? This is your last opportunity. If not, do we have any council members that have anything?
Yes. Public comment section. I want to apologize personally to the Christian Reporter News. It seems that they've been dropped from the blog that we receive daily as a news source, and I don't know the reason, and I would like for us to look into it. And I'm sorry that that has happened. And also, I want to make And also, I want to make sure that that news source is on the city clerk's agenda to send notices of meetings in the types that have because I don't want to single out any news source. And the other public comment that I had was to take a moment to really and truly think about the loss of the firefighters in Arizona. That is a job that most of us take for granted, to know that those first-line responders put their life out there to do their job. And it's very sad. And if we each could take a moment and thank a fireman, thank a policeman for the jobs that they do, I would greatly appreciate it because I'm very touched about this loss. And hopefully, we can say some prayers for those families.
Red Silas?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it just brought to my attention, you know, as we proceed on with this river revitalization and all, I believe there's a staging area, Rick, over here on Avenue A or Carl. And there's some folks around that neighborhood that are concerned about, is it ever going to go away? And I assume it is, once we finish the project. But they were told that it was going to go on for a short while. But rocks are being piled, and they said they've seen snakes out there. And so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of you guys and in all, you know, respect of this lady who, a couple of ladies contacted me. So just keep that in mind, that if we can keep that area a little cleaner than it is, you know, when the wind picks up and dust blows all over the place, I can imagine what they're going through. So just wanted to keep you in FYI.
So you'll know, we have gotten those complaints in times past. And so the contractor is, of course, the one using that as a staging area. So what we do is then go talk to the contractor and try and get that taken care of. So we have done, Carl's done that a few times already, and we'll do it again if need be.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Last week, after I was affirmed, I preached for about 10 minutes. And one of the things I was preaching about was that when any council member or myself asked for an item to be placed on the agenda, we want it on the agenda. We had two items on the agenda this week that were dropped. And I think Mr. Wardlaw has some comments he wanted to make about that. So this is your chance, sir.
Yes. May I defer to Ms. Farmer to start off first because she also had an item that was not addressed on the agenda. And then, all right, with you, Mr. Mayor, I'll go second.
Okay.
Be happy to. I clearly recall at the June 18 meeting that I had requested additional information with reference to the Hickory to be placed on the very next agenda, which is today. That item is Item 12, an update and presentation of the Hickory Aquifer water supply, which it is my understanding that we have to be very specific. And this is exactly what was on the agenda on the 18th, the wording. So therefore, I couldn't talk about things because I was stopped by legal, specifically those items. And it's not, again, is not worded to where we can talk about it in public. And I'm very unhappy about that. What does it take to, for a council member who is supposed to set the agenda to get the things on the agenda?
Ma'am, did you have that discussion with Daniel?
Yes, I did. But I also had the discussion during the council meeting, which is on tape and viewed as wanting to see the price that we had extended on the Hickory to this date and what the proposal was when we accepted the bid as to what the cost would be. I specifically asked for a comparison of those figures. That's not the way it's worded on here, and therefore, we can't talk about it.
Are you talking about treatment costs?
I'm talking about the entire project.
Okay.
So it's, I don't have anybody to ask because Daniel's not here. But this states on this agenda exactly what it did on the 18th, and I was stopped from talking about things by our attorney. And I made it very clear, and Mr. Hirschfield backed me up, that that's all we're asking to see, is a breakdown of what we awarded the bid on as to the estimated cost. And compare that to what we have spent to date. And we couldn't get into it then, and because it's worded exactly the same, I don't want to use the word assume. But I would assume we still can't talk about it, and that angers me.
Mrs. Farmer? If you look at the background, staff did use the same caption for the item. However, if you look at the background on the cover memo, it talks about you asking for the item detailing that you requested the term dates pertaining to the Hickory project and the engineering firm. It does cover your request. This item does satisfy what you requested.
Where?
Yes, ma'am.
In the background. Ms. Farmer, we'd be glad to provide additional information. If what you see today does not satisfy your interest in knowing, we'd be glad to follow up.
And we anticipate the presentation will cover the material that is presented in the memo, which is public.
Okay, then explain to me why we couldn't talk about it last week. Were you all not prepared? I mean, the wording on the agenda is exactly the same as it was.
Staff didn't have the information, perhaps, is my recollection.
So, fine. Then we'll talk, when we get to that item, we'll find out. But that is my complaint about the, for my part of the agenda.
Well, hopefully, we'll be able to address those issues shortly.
Okay.
Mr. Wardlaw?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to brag on you a little bit, but I'm also going to request that I have an adequate amount of time to explain this distasteful situation that we're in and make sure that all the members of the council understand what problems that the council is facing getting their items on the agenda. And of course, this has got to stop because if we can't get our items on the agenda timely, then in effect, our, got a mosquito here, then all the voters in the city of San Angelo will be disenfranchised because we will not be able to get our items heard and taken care of. And so I'm not pleased, to say the least. Mr. Mayor, at the last council meeting, you made, for you, what I thought was a very eloquent speech. And you made it clear, you made it clear to me, and I think everybody in this thing that was in attendance here, that there would be no more games that when council people requested items to be placed on the agenda, that they would be placed on the agenda. Well, let me bring you up to date on what's happened since then. The date that you made that great speech was June the 25th, which was last Tuesday. On that particular day, after the city council meeting was over, I went over to the city clerk's office with a typed letter requesting the placement on the agenda of two particular items having to do with consultants. And in that, it was requested, in the letter, it was requested that the item be placed on the agenda for today, July the 2nd. And I told Alicia that I would check back on Thursday to make sure those items had in fact been placed on the agenda. Because what the public may not understand is, if you don't get your request in within 72 hours, you'd be in violation of the Open Meetings Act for notice to the public, and you have to have that information in timely. Okay? On the next day, Wednesday, the following day after I placed my letter at the clerk's office, I did get a draft agenda, and my items were included in the agenda. And they had an item number, like 12 and 13, or 11 and 12. I've got it here. I'm not looking at it. So that looked like we were on track. So then on Thursday, as I told Alicia on Tuesday, that I would call and check and make sure the item was on the agenda. I did in fact call. I was told the item was still, two items were still on the agenda involving consultants. And then the next, no calls from anybody, did not talk to anybody, did not get permission from anybody to move my items or take them off the agenda. And the next thing I know, Friday afternoon at 5:00, when I get home from doing various things, I pull out my agenda, and my items have disappeared totally, not to be found on there anywhere. And they're not on the items, they're not on the agenda if the council people will look. They're not on the agenda at this point in time. And also, there's no mention made of these items in the executive session portion, which is a little bit relevant here in a minute, but not totally relevant. So anyway, I'm going to do everything in my power with my one vote and my sometimes persuasive ability to get this stopped once and for all. To me, if this is allowed to continue, Mr. Mayor, it'd just be kind of like in the Charlie Brown Peanuts comic strip where Charlie Brown's always trying to kick a field goal or an extra point, and Lucy's always the holder. And every time she comes up, he comes up to kick, she pulls the ball away. I can't, I can't, I can't represent my constituents, and I can't do good things for this town if I don't know that when I ask for something to be placed on the agenda, that it's going to be done so with no questions or permission of mine or notice or anything. Now let me tell you what's going on. You're going to hear some people say that I'm off-base. Well, I've been an attorney for a long time. And I'm, I'll stipulate, I'm well past my prime as an attorney. But I can go to the law library, which I have, and I researched this. And I am absolutely 100% right on this. And the taking of these items off the agenda is wrong. There's no justification for it. And it's put, it's put me in a position not to, either not to have these items heard, or they may try to make me go into executive session, which is going to be in violation of criminal law and other law on open meetings, taking this item to executive session. There is no notice in the agenda that this item or anything like it is on the executive session closed agenda. That is a requirement of the law, clearly a requirement. Also additionally, the items that I've requested are not executive closed-session agenda items. There's only a limited number of things that you can put on a closed-session agenda in the state of Texas. And there's three subsections, 55, 551.071, 551.072, and .074. And if you don't fit in one of these three categories, then you're in violation of the law if you try to have a closed-session hearing on something. And that's what's being asked of me right now, and I'm not going to do it. But also, let me point out even further that some people obviously don't know, and that is, if an item is even in fact allowable to be put in executive session to be heard away from the public, the city council can order that item to be put out in open session. That's just an, if something is eligible for the executive session, that's just an option of the council. That's not a directive of the law. And because the law is, this is the Open Meetings Act. And let me just read, obviously, some people don't, haven't done their homework either. Let me just read, let me just read the Attorney General's opinion. Governmental body may not meet in closed session, which is what they're asking me to do today and these other good friends of mine, to discuss employment of independent contractor such as engineering, architectural, or consulting firm. Texas Attorney General's opinion, number MW129. So what I intend to do in the future, and I hope Ms. Farmer and others will support me, is that we're going to have to take whatever action, however harsh it is, or however unpleasant it is, to get this stopped once and for all. And I'm going to make an attempt at the, I'm going, today I'm going to hand the city clerk some other, I'm going to reissue my request that these be placed on the open session for next meeting. And I'm also going to place something else on there that if it's not placed on there, then they're going to be, I'm going to seek repercussions. And I'm going to try to get this straight. And also, unless Ms. Farmer, she's upset too. And I think the only thing we can do today as a remedy is just take some of these other items off the open agenda so that people will understand, if we can't get our items on there, you know, we're the employer, not the employee, that they're not going to get their items on the agenda either. So I guess we'll just decide how we want to handle this. But anyway, this type of activity, which is insubordinate to the declarations of the mayor that he made clear, it's also disrespectful to the mayor, and it's disrespectful to all these council people to be taking these items off the agenda. And so I'm sorry it happened, and I didn't get on the council to be fighting like this. If I wanted a bunch of fights, I would still be out there trying lawsuits. So, you know, I hope the council will support me, and we'll just see what happens. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
I think in a nutshell, what this is saying is, I'm only as good as my information. I am asked to make decisions that are put forth on these agendas. And in order for me to make that decision, I need information beforehand as to what I'm making a decision on. You know, if there's something in the consent agenda or on the regular agenda that I don't know about, hasn't been discussed with me, staff hasn't provided enough information, how can we, as a council, possibly make the right decisions that the citizens have entrusted us to do? This is the perfect time, it's new council, to get back to transparency in our operation. You know, the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask that we pull items two, four, three and seven, two, three, and seven, because I have no knowledge or information of this beforehand. And one of these is a million-dollar decision. I'm not comfortable with rubber stamping things, and the staff has not informed us or provided the information beforehand so that we know what we're talking about when we make the decision. A lot of times, staff gets busy. They know about it. It's no big deal. Hey, you know, run along. But it's a big deal to me. I don't know about it. I need to know about it. And therefore, I want the transparency that we've had in the past back and the communication back with the council. It clearly states in the rules book that council sets the agenda. And if we set the agenda and staff decides to move it or drop it or don't have the information on it yet, tell us before we get here or before we get angry. We need that communication. And I don't want to have to ask repeatedly, like Mr. Silas has had to ask seven times, for an item to be placed on the agenda. I don't know what is happening, but I too want it stopped. There are, you know, a couple of staff people that give us background information all the time, good top source written up, and I'm comfortable with it. And I make the decision. And that's my feeling in the matter.
So point of clarification, you pull those from consent agenda. Are you also asking that they be pulled from the regular agenda, or are we there yet?
Well, I was actually waiting until the mayor called for the consent agenda and to pull those. And then when we got to the regular session, I've got five items that I would like pulled today. And I can either wait for the mayor to call us and get us to that point, or we can talk about them now.
Let's wait till we get there.
Okay.
When I made my speech last week, I made it like a fence builder. And Winky made his like a lawyer. And I think you made it very plain. This is a new council, and we're taking a new direction. And we have a commitment to our citizens. And I think everyone up here takes this extremely, very, very seriously. We are going to be honest. We are going to be open. And we are going to be transparent on every dollar of yours that we spend. And we want the information that we can get. And we want all of it that we can get. Because we want to make honest, intelligent decisions. And I think that is what you expect of us. Is there anyone else needs to speak? Done?
I was just going to say, if no one else wants to pull an item, any other item, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus two, three, and seven. And I was also going to ask to pull number two. So I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is, minus items two, three, and seven.
I'll make a second with the consent agenda minus two, three, and seven.
I'll make a second with the consent agenda minus two, three, and seven.
Any public comment on this? If not, we have a motion, we have a second to accept the consent agenda minus items two, three, and seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. What I would like to do now is take items two, three, and seven, move them to the irregular agenda, and let's discuss them. Do I have consensus of four on that? Okay, let's discuss item number two. Item number two on the consent agenda is consideration of awarding bid WU0613 for the 2013 Waterline Improvement Contract One to QRO Mex Construction Company of Granite Shoals, Texas, in the amount of $1,344,648, and authorizing the city manager to execute said contract in substantially the attached form and any related documents submitted to Water Utilities Director Ricky Dixon. Mr. Dixon, would you take a seat for this, please, sir?
Thank you, Council, Mayor. This item, we have sent out bids for the waterline replacement projects for three contractors. The three contractors were Darnell Construction LLC, Housley Communications Incorporated, QRO Mex Construction Company, and the low bid for the project was submitted by QRO in the amount of $1,344,648. This project is just a continuation of Water Utilities Capital Improvement Projects and Rehabilitation of the water system. Approximately 13,369 feet of cast our mains will be replaced under this contract. This project will cover lines on East Harris Avenue, Main Street, Browning North Main, East Beauregard Avenue, Houston Hart, Benfickland Avenue ZQ, and East Avenue D from Oaks to Powell Street, and we are recommending the acceptance and approval of this bid.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
And I have a comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Done? Let's start with Charlie.
The reason that I pulled this, and yes, you have a background sheet in the attachment, and I read it, but in the interest of transparency, I wanna ask a question, and, and make sure that our documentation is accurate. In the summary, you state that the bids have been received from three contractors for the construction of the waterline improvements. The three contractors were Darnell Construction, Housley Communication, and QRO Mex Construction Company.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not picking on you, but I am aware that in the recent past, that your brother is a partner, it was Darnell and Dixon.
Yes, ma'am.
Construction, is that still the case?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make it clear.
Sure.
In here, that all of us that have been here forever, we know that it's been Darnell and Dixon.
Yes, ma'am.
And for it to just all of a sudden show Darnell, I would've been more appreciative as you had, if you would've stated that formerly my brother was, so therefore, there is no, and I don't need to recuse myself.
Well, if you would notice on the bid tab that was sent with this information, that Dixon Underground Utility Construction Company was mailed a bid, so...
And, and that's, that's fine. And I did notice it.
And I apologize if it wasn't enough information, and, but yeah.
But I just want it clear to the public that there's no...
And I'm fine with that. There's no nothing.
Inside, okay. That's all that I really wanted to question, Mr. Dixon.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Don?
Mine doesn't really have anything to do with you per se.
Thank you.
What, you did a good job as far as I'm concerned. What my contention is, we have a local bidder on a million three project that is less than, than 5% out of the low bid. And what I have asked the staff to do is to look in, to see if there's anything that we can legally do to, to try to get our local contractor, whose business is here, whose family lives here, whose employees are gonna be working and paying taxes for us, to see if there's any wiggle room on this before we, we go ahead and, and give this to someone in Granite Shoals. So I would like to pull it completely and give the staff time to look into that and, and see what they can come up with.
I believe we're ready to address that today, Don. Give us a minute. I think Mr. Banks can handle that.
Okay.
Good morning, Council. Roger Banks, Purchasing Manager. There are, while it's always, even in purchasing, we are, our goal is to try to get as much competition as possible, so we get the best value for our money and get, and stretch our dollars as far as we can. There are some restrictions by state purchasing law as to when you can award bids for product, services, and construction services. In the case of construction services, it's very limited, the contract has to be $100,000 or less. Anything over $100,000 or less, then there's no preference that, that is allowed for us to award a bid to a local bidder. So, like I said, it varies from different types of contracts, specifically for construction services, it is, if the contract is less than $100,000, then you're right, it would be within, if the prices were within 5%. There are some things that we could do, ask the business to provide us, where you would have the opportunity to award them as a local bid. It happens from time to time, but it doesn't happen often, Don.
Okay.
Johnny?
Ricky, just, I just had a simple question. I know that, you know, I've slept since the last budget meetings or hearings, or whatever you wanna call them, but was this, was this a budgeted item?
Yeah, it's in the capital improvements plan.
It is, okay. Because I looked through it, I must've overlooked it, I just wanted clarification that it was budgeted, so...
Correct, it is.
Okay.
Now, the council wish to speak for this? Well, I too agree that we need to do local bids, and it's, I don't like them to go out of town, because we have no control over this, and things often happen. Don, if you're going to make a motion to pull this until we can consider it further, you might get a second.
And excuse me, I think that the law was correctly explained by Mr. Banks, and we just unfortunately don't have the option to go under the provision under state law, which would allow us to utilize local preference procedures. This is just a standard contract because of the amount. And so unfortunately, in this situation, we can't indulge in, in that. So I, I don't think there's further exploration on that point.
But as a member of the city council, Mr. Vardeman does have the right to ask to pull something for further consideration.
Absolutely.
And if he can get a second and three votes...
He has a right, but I'm just saying that I'm not disagreeing about him pulling it. I'm just saying that Mr. Banks did address the correct issue in the law.
I understand, and I'm leaving it in Mr. Vardeman's hands, is what he wants to do next.
I move that we pull this to give, give staff a little bit more time to, to look into that and see if there's anything we can do. I know on the, on the bottom of our contracts, there, there's a, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe in the bottom of our contracts, Roger, there's a, a sentence in there that says that, that the city has the right to refuse a bid, is, is that correct or not?
Yes, sir, it is. As the council, you are, for any contract over $50,000, you can reject or award the bids, and either not do the project, or send it back out for bids, or move it, to give us direction as to what you would like to do. That would be correct.
Okay. And that's my motion, is to remove until the, the next meeting, to give the staff a little bit more time to look into.
I'm going to second the motion, because I would like to have staff provide counsel with the law, the stipulation, because I have read that we, we're not required to take the lowest bid, there's exceptions, and I wanna see it, so therefore, I'm gonna second his motion.
There has been a motion and a second, that we postpone this until there's more discussion and more consideration. Other comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, there's a couple more.
Okay. Ms. Fleming?
No, she, she answered that for me.
Anyone else? John?
Ricky, I guess the only question I have is, I guess there is no deadline, timeline that we're looking at to have this done, if we postpone it another couple of weeks, or are we okay on timing?
Yeah, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
There has been a motion and a second. I will now call for the vote. All of those in favor in postponing this until more consideration can be given, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This has been put back, and it will be further considered. Next, we have item three on our consent agenda, which we have moved. This is consideration of awarding bid WU0513 Water Utilities Grinder Pumps and Spare Parts to Morrison Supply Company, and that has nothing to do with me, and Smith Pump Company Incorporated, based on lowest unit bid in compliance with the bid requirements for each specific item. And this again, Kevin Krueger says it will be, but I suppose it's you, Mr. Dixon.
Well, I'm already up here, so we'll just stay with this. Typically, and, and what we try to do on this bid is just try to get the best price that we can for the city. Typically, we just do these on as-needed bases and get POs for whatever parts we need, or new pumps, or whatever. But we went out for a bid on, on this, just to try to secure better prices. The city has 100-plus grinders out at the lake that we have to maintain, and this is just for, if we need new pumps, spare parts, whatever it is. Two vendors, Smith Pump Company, Morrison Supplies, as stated, put in the bid, the low bid on the pumps was Smith Pump, and the low bid on the parts supply was Morrison Supply. And this is just out of operational funds out of the water distribution wastewater collection side, so that's kind of where we're at.
Mr. Dixon, the reason that I pulled it, it doesn't mention a dollar amount. Yes, I have the bid tabulations book for the public that's out there, that's reading the agenda, or the newspaper, or whoever. I mean, consideration of awarding the bid, is there not to exceed a dollar amount? Is there a dollar amount that we can put in there, or are we giving you permission to spend $20 million?
We should've put, it's for $12,396, I should've had that in the caption, and I will make sure that that happens in the future.
$12,396 is the bid, and, is that what you're saying?
Estimated any expense further? Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve not to exceed the bid in the packet.
I'll second that.
Further council comment? Comment from the public? If not, there has been a motion made to approve it with a ceiling on the amount spent of $12,000...
396.
$12,396. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This passes unanimously. Now, let's go to number seven. This is consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing release of a 20-foot by 300-foot utility easement located within the bounds of the Reteroya Hills addition, Section Five, Block Two, Lot 4B, in southwest San Angelo, and providing for the mayor to execute and deliver a legal instrument formally releasing and discharging such easement. Ms. AJ, Barbara.
If you have specific questions, I can answer those, or I can give you a short presentation, whichever you prefer.
I'd like a presentation of what it is, other than what's there.
Okay. As we stated in our background report, we have had a request from an individual that's seeking to develop this property as a hotel site. In order to do this, they are requesting to formally abandon an underground utility easement, as it's labeled on the subdivision plat. In our background report, we talk about how it is currently an unused underground utility easement. We also have listed the different entities that we poll when we receive such requests. Those include all of our development-related departments and divisions, as well as the private utility companies. And so we've outlined the rather lack of comments in this case. We did not receive any comments that the abandonment of this easement would create any issues, as there are no utilities currently in this easement. And so abandoning this easement would allow more buildable area on this site for the proposed hotel.
Who is TMI Hospitality?
They are the company that will be proposing, I'm sorry, actually constructing the new Marriott at the site.
It's just, okay. Motion to approve?
Second. Any further council comment?
Question.
John?
AJ, is there a road being built between Discount Tire and the Dodge House? Is there a road right alongside there?
There's an access, access point, it's not an officially dedicated street, but it is a paved access easement for emergency vehicles.
And who, who did that? We did, or?
I would have to research that, I'm sorry. I would imagine it was done around the time of construction on those sides.
Does that access, does it go all the way back to that back property?
It does. It actually comes out, I believe, right about this point.
Okay.
And so it actually punches through access to the rear of all of those facilities to provide fire protection.
Thank you, that's all right.
Any further comment, council? Public comment from the public? If not, we have a motion to approve as, as presented. We have a second. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That is unanimous. We're ready now to go to the regular agenda, but first, I want a few minutes to break, so let's take about, let's take about five or 10 minutes. Beating back the order. Our next item will be number eight on the public hearing in the comments section. This is a presentation by the Downtown San Angelo, Inc., the First Quarter Report. Mr. Dale Velazquez, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and congratulations to the new council. We look forward to working with you. And also, I wanted to let you know that our president, Brenda Gunner, called me this morning, wasn't feeling very well. She was gonna present also as all the financials, which she's very astute on, and I'm not quite as astute on, so I'm gonna kind of skim through that part of it. But I, I did wanna give a, a report on some of the activities that we are engaged in. Just last week, we just launched a new initiative called Discover Downtown. And what we're doing is inviting our business merchants and restaurants and etc. to participate in what, more or less, an open house. And we had the first one yesterday, a new business that started, was started by Rita Caronco, it's called Rita's Floral and Design Center. And we had a block party to celebrate, and in 105-degree temperature, we had approximately 200 people show up, which I thought was pretty impressive. It was a great initiative, and we'll continue to do that on a quarterly basis. Also, we launched, and one of the things we do, and I'm gonna pass them out, working with the San Angelo Standard Times, they, they put together an insert in the newspaper, and it, it's about retail and the businesses downtown promoting them. And inside that particular insert, there's also a brochure that we print on an askneed basis, really, and an update in terms of new businesses and for restaurants and bars. So I wanted to, I wanted to put that out for, for you to look at. One of the other initiatives that we're involved in, and, and I hope you've read or heard about, is the cleanup of the Roosevelt Hotel, which we've been engaged in since May. And I really wanted to take just a few seconds to thank the City of San Angelo and their staff, especially Bob Sneeman, Ron Lewis, John Rangel, and Shane Kelton for their support in helping us with that. The Texas Department of Justice let us use some of their trustees to help us with this project. Also, wanted to mention Robert Sorrell and Republic, Acme Metal, all those individuals or companies and individuals made it all possible. We worked like clockwork to get all of the cleaning up that's taking place there. On July the 24th, we will begin the asbestos removal process of that particular facility. And our hope then is to sell it, and hopefully recover our costs in, in the cleanup process, and that it will become a vital building in the downtown area, especially where it's We are working with the planning department. We're gonna host a mini-town hall meeting, if you will, on July the 9th, and that is to discuss the sign ordinance and some of the questions and confusion. Hopefully, that's, that's, that's the goal is of this meeting, is to make sure that all merchants downtown understand what the sign ordinances are and what the regulations are around signs.
When and where, Dale?
It'll be July the 9th, Tuesday, at 5:30 at the Downtown San Angelo office. And so we've already extended the invitations to all of the downtown merchants, and, and we're well on our way on that.
May the mayor go, may the mayor show up?
Well, I'd love for the mayor to be there, sir. And all the city council, all, all city council. I know Johnny is already on the, on the plans to be there. We also have been in contact with the San Angelo Police Department and working to address some of the concerns that we have for downtown safety, as far as especially traffic. One of the things we've discussed is that there be a study on traffic flow, look at the reduction of the speed limit in the downtown area. I know that they reported to us that on weekends, there's approximately anywhere between 3,000 to 5,000 people in downtown area, especially in the evening, which is where we're mostly concerned about. So we are working with them on that issue. So, we are working with them on that issue. And so, I'm going to get into the report here. I'm going to kind of skim through down to the bottom, bottom line. Well, here, I'm going to go into some of the rehab work that's being done, and the amounts that's been submitted through the planning. Before I get into that, let me retract a little bit. One of the things that we found in going through the State Comptroller's report on sales tax was that we identified errors that, or omissions, actually. There were omissions of businesses that were not being reported on, and it took us a couple of months to get that straightened out. So, our increase, or some of the increases that you'll see in this report is because of those businesses being omitted by the state in terms of their report, reporting structure. Here we have at 609 South Chadburn, some work being done on what was the old Rita Theater, and that again is, well, $600. Charles Cornfield has, at 59 North Chadburn, has invested $6,240 in building that he's owns and rehabbing. This particular project is at 495, new construction. This is an industrialized commercial, which I referenced before about the Design and Historic Commission position on that. We have another project here of $1,000, Russ Street Ministries. So, all in all, with the independent school district, first quarter, we had, they spent $637,000 on rehabbing some work done at Fort Concho. So, we had four relocations, 22 new jobs that were created, 1,725 hours of volunteer work, for a total of $696,840 in reinvestment in downtown. Our cumulative for downtown reinvestment is $78,319,332. Here is our profit and loss report for the first quarter. Our total is $75,874. We budgeted $56,044.53, so we're over budget by $19,829.47. There's our expenses, I won't bore you with that. And our total net income is $39,741.96. We had budgeted $26,388.13. We're over budget by $13,353.83. We continue to do our fundraising efforts and initiatives, and we'll see that. We just purchased 10 new sheep, and that's part of why we're a little bit over budget. We purchased 10 new sheep, the fiberglass sheep, I hope everybody knows what I'm talking about. And we've already sold seven, but the money hasn't come in yet, so, of those 10 sheep. So, we'll see those numbers changing some. Do you have any questions on any of this?
Dale, I do have a quick one.
Yes, sir.
Do you know when the, the cumulative total on the reinvestment, when did that start? Do you know how far it goes back, 78 million?
In 2005.
2005?
Yes, sir. That's when Downtown San Angelo became, was created.
Okay, thank you.
Charlotte?
Could you back up on your screen to the displays, the Lacy Lance at 5:30 South Irving?
Yes, ma'am.
What is that?
That is a commercial industrial trailer that's located on, as it says, 530 South Irving, between Avenue A and B, to kind of give you a reference.
Its offices, real estate, attorneys, I mean, what are they?
Don't quote me on this, because I really, my understanding, it's Devon Energy. And they, it's a temporary structure.
This is a temporary structure?
Yes, ma'am.
This mobile, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
We've been, we've been told that it's approximately going to be there around six months, and that it will be moved at that point.
Six months from when?
And then, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, six months from when?
I believe it was placed there two months ago. I'm not 100% sure about.
Yeah, at least a while back.
Yes, sir.
So, you're talking about six months from when it was placed there?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding.
Did it have some zoning exception, or?
There was no zoning exception. It was, that, that particular plat or property, it has been designated, and it is rightfully there. Which brings me to this point. One of the things that we discussed at a previous meeting, we, there was a discussion of reducing the size of the Design and Historic Commission territory, if you will. And as Downtown San Angelo, we don't agree with that. We believe, in fact, that it should be extended, especially from the river moving south. Currently, the downtown Main Street property, or guideline, territory extends all the way to Washington on the south end, and we believe that the River Corridor, or the Design and Historic Commission, as it's known today, would be better served if it went to that, to that, to those boundaries. And that would have prevented this particular project from taking place at that location.
I think the key word here is temporary.
Yeah, it is.
And Charlotte, I mean, there are two buildings just like that, and it's right behind that old M-System Food Store on South Chadburn? That's where they're at?
I just don't want to get into what we got into seven years ago, that it was just temporary, a couple of places downtown.
And they're still there.
They're still there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Fleming? Anyone else have anything they want to say? Public, this is your time for comments on this report, if you have any. If not, thank you, sir. Y'all keep working, make downtown viable. It's good for all of us. Thank you, Dave. All right, let's move on to the next item, number nine. This is discussion and possible action regarding the fiscal year 213, 214 budget preparation. And I suppose Morgan will be making our presentation, you and Michael.
This, I mean, you were up here on the 18th, and it was just, you gave us our calendar. Is this just a repeat of that, because?
Yes, ma'am. We just wanted to remind this new counsel what that calendar was, and emphasize that we were interested in hearing what this new council's priorities were, so that we could begin moving our, our work in that direction.
I'm just having a problem talking about the 2014 budget, when we have yet to have a budget workshop for the council members. That's, that's where I'm at. We haven't had one single workshop.
Well, and we are tickled to hear you say that, because that's how we feel also, that we, that we should meet and hear what your priorities are, so that we can craft a budget which, which reflects those priorities. And that is, we have, with your statement that you feel like we should meet, we have achieved our objective for this agenda item. We're, we're interested in knowing what your priorities are, and we wanted you to know what the rest of the year looked like.
I'm, I'm ready to schedule workshops. We've got to start working on the budget. Got my calendar, if everybody else is, if that's what you're wanting to know.
Go write to the calendars, please.
I can't speak for the, for the rest of the, the dice up here, but I know, I definitely want to be as hands-on as we can, and my priority is the budget. You know, we can't, we can't set our priorities as far as getting anything accomplished without a good budget, so.
Mr. Mayor? And I totally agree with Don and Ms. Farmer. When I looked at, when I looked at the background, even though it says discuss 2013, 14 budget, all I saw was calendars. So, if you, if it's going to be calendar-related only, we just call it a calendar-related subject, and not, we're going into the budget already. I understand we're setting meetings up, but, you know, say that it's just discussion of calendar setup, or, you know, dates that we're looking at, so. I think that's where maybe the confusion is also, because I, I totally agree that we're all interested in budget, but if it's calendar, just label it calendar.
Sure, we're happy to do that and make it as flexible for the council's pleasure, certainly.
Go ahead, Morgan.
That's, that's really it. You hit it. We've got a couple of meetings here in July. We're at the first one. We've got a regularly scheduled meeting at the next council meeting in, in two weeks. And in August, we'll start taking action. Under our, under normal circumstances, we would start taking action. We would introduce that budget at the second meeting in August. And so, you know, we're, I think, to let you know that the timeframe is tight, we'd, we'd like you to maybe tell us what your interest is in additional meetings. We can talk about that now, or under future agenda items, and...
It's possible action. I don't see why we can't set a date right now.
I certainly don't see us having any budget workshops this week, with the 4th of July in there.
No, no, no.
So, that starts with, you don't have July 8th, you've got July 26th.
By state law, we have to have a draft publish, budget published. That's not an action item required.
No, and that draft budget does not have to be, you know, a draft including council priorities. We need to get our old ducks lined up, so that we're ready to talk about new ducks to line up. And, and we'll be lining up old ducks to get the draft.
How about the week of the 22nd? I mean, is that, that gives all of us time to work into our calendars. I mean, I've already got stuff booked through the 18th, and you do too. That's, that's not good for the mayor or myself, but the week of the 22nd or the 29th works for me, for workshops, to set workshops.
I'd say when staff is ready to schedule a date, tell us, tell us when you're ready, and we'll work around it.
We can be ready on the 22nd.
22nd.
Which one of the 22nd's?
July.
No, I mean, on that calendar, we have two 22nd's. Which one are we talking about?
Oh, it does. 22, 20, we just, they said 23rd.
Are we talking about the first 22nd or the second 22nd?
I think the second, well, either one of those can work, but maybe on a Tuesday, the second 22nd.
There are two. See what you're saying.
Tuesday, the 22nd would be fine with me, if it's all right with the rest of the council.
No, it's the 23rd.
As long as we're not confused with Monday.
The second 22nd.
The second 22nd, okay. I'm going to write.
The 23rd would be, the 23rd would be fine with me, if it, if it's fine.
Morgan, do you see what we're talking about?
Absolutely, I apologize.
There's a Monday and Tuesday.
9 a.m.?
Oh, that wasn't intentional?
Those are two Mondays, Mr. Mayor. Two Mondays.
I've had many weeks like that.
Well, let me ask you this. So, on July 16th, it'll be just a regular council meeting. Why couldn't we turn that into a, or could we not?
We can.
I mean, I'd be interested in, even on the 16th, of starting discussions.
And I don't have a problem with that either, if staff is ready. That's what I was waiting for, was staff to say when you, when they are ready for these.
Morgan? Let me ask you, you guys have had budget discussions with all your directors, is that correct?
Not with all of them. Some of those had to be rescheduled, because we had that emergency, where we activated the Emergency Operations Center. And so, those are rescheduled for this week? I think that...
Yes, sir.
We got them all in this week?
Well, no, there's still some outstanding, but we're working through it.
Yes, Mr. Silves, we have been working through those budget discussions internally, and we'll be...
We'll have the workshop on the 16th at 1 o'clock, and the regular meeting the morning?
Rodney?
Yeah, that's fine.
That all right with you?
That's good.
If it's all right with...
That's fine with, that's fine with, if it's fine with y'all, it's fine with...
Council meeting going to be over?
Sir?
Is the council meeting going to be over?
Well, we'll work on...
No, no, he's talking about the, the morning session.
We'll work on it.
If it's, if it's all right with council, we'll post in a way that allows some flexibility there, if, if we can. If we can't, we'll, we'll post the way the law requires.
I plan on these meetings be over by 1 or 2 o'clock, so, you know, anywhere you put them right in there, I think we can work with it. If that's good with the council, it's good with staff. I think we need to set it up on the 16th.
Yes.
In addition to the 23rd, I believe I hear this is...
No, no.
No?
I don't think we need to...
Well, we'll have time at the 16th.
Yeah, we'll just...
If we need them, if we need them, we'll have a second one on the second 22nd, but let's just do it on 16th and go from there.
And not the first 22nd.
Stowen?
Yes, sir.
That work, Morgan?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And that's what we need for item number nine.
Everybody satisfied?
So, let me ask this. So, what about what you have there, Morgan? What about August? We just delete all that, there's...
Well, those, the, the items in August are required action items, and those are regularly scheduled dates, so we'll move ahead with those if we're ready to do so. And of course, based on the progress we make at the 16th, we'll, we'll schedule any other budget work sessions we need to.
We'll know what we need to do then. Anybody in the public have any problem with this? If not, we'll move on, move on to the next agenda item. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I want to address that when you get to it. I want to pull 10, 12, and 13 items from the agenda. I want those, I would, if the council agrees, I want those items heard whenever I get, get to be heard with my, my agenda.
It's fine with me.
Now, say that again. You want to pull item 10, which is hotel occupancy?
I think he wants to table it.
10, 12, and 13.
Well, I'd rather go ahead and discuss them. I guess it's going to be up to the council, if, whatever the four people, whatever four members say. I would like to go ahead and discuss them.
Are you wanting to table those items?
Yeah.
You don't want to talk about it?
Until the next meeting.
For what reason, sir?
So, so I can get my items heard also, that I tried to put on the agenda for today.
I think we will get your items heard. I think we will get your items heard. We covered that pretty well. I would, I would, I would like to go ahead and hear the rest of the agenda. I think it's important. Do I have consensus of the council to go ahead and hear them, or do we, do we postpone them?
I'm okay with it.
Mr. Fleming?
I'm fine with it.
Marty?
I'm with it.
Hearing them?
Going ahead and hearing them.
Marty?
I, I would definitely like to hear 12, for sure.
I'm not interested, that's my item that's on there, and I'm not interested in hearing it unless they're prepared to give me what I asked for at last council meeting.
Well, I can see, I could see then some, some reason to pull 12. I don't see any reason to pull 10.
Well, I've made myself as clear as I can.
But I think in the interest of the public, and I understand that you didn't get your items on there, and I understand that we covered that, but I don't see the reason to, personally, I don't see the reason to sacrifice other items because of the two that you lost. So, I'm asking for the council members, on item 10, do I have four people that want to hear 10?
I'd like to hear 10.
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
10, let's read it, because I also want to hear it. Item number 10, discussion and possible action regarding excess hotel occupancy tax receipts. And again, Ms. Morgan.
Mayor, Morgan's going to help me out through this, but I'll probably walk us through, if that's all right?
That's fine, sir.
What we wanted to do is remind council that we've seen unprecedented growth in occupancy tax revenues. We see a significant upward trend. We're not ready to bet the farm that this is a long-term trend, and we're not ready to make commitments, even in the short term, to utilize all that money. We think we want to be smart about how we use that money. And that means that, as staff, we're, we're, we're going to make a, an estimate of what excess revenue exists, and then ask for council input on how, what's the best use of those funds. And so, at this point, we want to treat these, this excess, if we determine there is one, as one-time type money. We don't want to make an ongoing commitment with that at this point. And then, of course, we want to utilize that excess for items council deems as priority. When you look at last year's activity, and this year's activity, what, what you end up with is revenue that exceeds what it was budgeted. So, for the current, for, for, as we look at the current year, you look at actual revenue from last year is 2.2 million. The current year's actual budget this year is just under 1.6 million. And the year-to-date revenues through the end of May is 1.7 million. So, we've already achieved the years, a year's worth of revenue through the end of May. And based on the trends through the end of May, that revenue could hit $2.6 million in this year. Now, we're getting ready to talk about two different years. We want to look at last year's budget, and act, last year's actual experience, and we want to talk about money that exists there, but we also want to leave you with the impression, the understanding that we think this year, there's going to be some excess also. So, if we go to the next slide, please. Looking at what exists as of 9:30... slide, please. Looking at what exists as of 9/30/2012, the end of last fiscal year, that Civic Events Fund, that 9/30/12 Civic Events Fund fund balance, $670,000. The Civic Events Fund is where those monies go in and are distributed out of. If you assume you want a 90-day reserve, recall that that is the finance industry's term for a fund balance, a liquid fund balance to ride out difficult economic times or to address emergency issues. They express that in a number of days of expenditures. So 90-day, a 90-day reserve of fund balance would be approximately $505,000, which would leave a surplus of approximately $164,000. Plus, in our contract renewal with the C V B, they also, because they were, the revenues were up last year, they received more revenue in that old ordinance than they needed to cover the budget that they had. So they're going to return to us approximately $300,000. It's a little over that, but I think it's 300, 300 is a safe number. And so when you add that to what we have just declared as a surplus, you have approximately $464,000 that we're saying might be available to council to allocate to one-time projects. Now, that's as of 9/30. That doesn't include this year's activity also. So this is cash in hand. This is not a projection. This is cash in hand, with the exception of the $300,000 from the C V B. But they have that booked as a liability. They booked it as a liability during their audit.
Michael, when do we get that 300 back?
They're ready to write us a check at any point. And so, the C V B, we'll hear in a minute, was involved in our discussion of what we think priorities are for this occupancy tax money. And depending on how those discussions go, we may say, keep this money and do this project, or send us the money back. We'll issue you a check for the money for the project. But this is, this was, this is the amount we're saying is surplus based on current operating standards in the Civic Events Fund, and could be made available by council for projects that council thinks are priorities. Now, before we move on, I think it'd be an appropriate question to ask. Will staff, how far do you want us to go today? We don't have to take any action on this today. Our intent is to, we've had part of this discussion before with the other council. Our intent today is to inform and allow council to begin thinking about this possible excess, to begin formulating questions or opinions in their, in your minds about what the priorities might be, what you might see as worthy projects. And so, and to form a basis for further discussions if necessary. So
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Morgan, can you go back one slide? Michael, the 2.6 million, is that in addition to the year-to-date revenues?
No, sir. That would be where the year-to-date could end up. So in this example, we are likely, if the trend continues, we're likely to collect another $860,000 on top of that 1.739.
Okay.
Can we possibly use that money for, what projects can we not use it for? Perfect example is the Fairmont Cemetery that we're talking about, that we own as a city, and we need to invest money back into that project to get it going. Can you possibly use that money for that?
Good question. The principle associated, it's controlled by state law, and the principle associated with it, the underlying principle is heads in beds. So if an event, or an activity, or a facility contributes toward the placement or the generation of heads in beds, generally, it's something we can look further into. There are some more particulars associated with it, but
Those are heads in beds for eternal
Well, you have a funeral, you have people come in from out of town.
We would certainly be willing to look into that if you wanted us to.
I'm not interested in, as I stated with the last group, I'm not interested in jumping in there and spending any of it other than something that we, like Mr. Fleming just mentioned, the funds are needed to support the cemetery. And, you know, I would be willing to spend it on that because it's needed and it's going to make more money in the future. Other than that, I'm in no hurry to spend money that projected that we're going to get in excess as I want to hold on to it.
Anyone else?
Yes, I agree with Charlotte 100% completely. And, but I would like to see the language, the legal language that says what we can use this for, and not just have some examples. That doesn't inform me to the extent I want to be informed. So I know you can get that for us, Michael.
Yes, sir. This is good conversation. What we wanted to date, if you look at our list today, you see we've got a few items checked off there. Today's discussion was concept. We have some excess. We think there are some needs out there, and we think the excess and the needs can be matched up. We do want to have a schedule, have a discussion where we cover what the legal restrictions are, and find out exactly from a legal standpoint what our opportunities are. And then, once we identify, once council identifies what its priorities are, and the pace and the phasing associated with some of these projects, we'll need to come back and amend our budget to allow those expenditures to occur. So I think at this point, what I'm hearing is we want to, our next step formally is we want to know legally what our options are. We want to provide that information to council and have further this discussion down the road.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Don?
You know, as far as the list goes
Morgan, can you move us into that, please?
It's a good list. But I think with these things, kind of like what everyone else has said, we need to be sure that we have things like a forklift that'll last us 20 years, a roof for the Coliseum that's going to last us years, except for the consultant. Why do we need a consultant for the roof?
The roof has suffered damage. It's an old roof, and so we've lost pieces off of it. So I don't know what terminology they used on that. But basically, the roof is going to have to have some sort of engineering design on it. So whether it's a consultant or, you know, a licensed engineer who works for a company, maybe you don't even have to pay them for that. But that project will have to go out for bid, and initially, we're going to have to have someone come in and assess, you know, do we want to put the same kind of roof back on it, or are there some new modern-type roofs that would be longer lasting, those kind of things. So those may or may not be something that actually cost funds.
Okay.
Johnny?
I was just going to ask, on that list right there, Morgan, what are the asterisks?
I think it's important to note that for a couple of these items, we're actually leveraging our dollars. There are other funding sources available. So what the asterisk means is that is not the complete project cost. For example, the convention center marquee, the cost of that would be $50,000. There's $35,000 already budgeted, already available for investment in this facility we're in. There would just be a request from hot allocation for $15,000. Very similar with the beams at the visitor's center. A very similar situation.
What is that, beams at visitor's center?
There's some beams that are not, they're exposed to the weather, and they're not weathering well at the visitor's center. And as I recall, it's going to be approximately $80,000.
$60,000 to $80,000.
And they, the Chamber, I believe, is coming up with some cash, and the Health Foundation. And so this, again, is money that would be matched with other monies. In fact, if it's all right with council, I'll just take a minute and go through these right quick. Fort Concho Stables Air Conditioning, that was seen by both groups, the C V B group and the Civic Events Group, as a priority, that the facility would receive lots more rental activity if people could have air conditioning when the weather required it. The convention center marquee, obviously, we have an old marquee out front, and that replacement and updating would be a priority. River Fest, we're going to hear about River Fest here in a few minutes. There's a proposal to fund a portion of the expenses associated with the celebration of the river. We'll talk about that on a future agenda item. Sewer line at the convention center, there is, when this facility has high-volume activity, they have trouble with the sewer line, and it's a regular issue. It backs up, and they have to close the restrooms down. And that needs some work. And so that is a proposed item. Beams at the visitor's center, there's one or more beams that are not weathering well. And so they're looking at replacing those with a more suitable material. Coliseum Roof Consultant, could you go to the next page, please? Really, our concern is for the Coliseum roof. And because of what Rick went through, we talked about the possibility of a consultant to guide us.
Yeah, and even on that estimate, those are, I know from what we've heard just initially, that roof replacement's going to probably be a half a million plus. So I think the half a million is conservative. So those are just
We do think that's a priority. That roof is very old, and the facility, it'll be a while before, you know, we hear talk once in a while now about, what are we going to do when it's time to replace that facility? But we need that facility to last for quite a bit longer.
These items are maintenance. Are we not doing routine maintenance through the year, such as, you know, a flushing and cleaning of the sewer lines, especially in tree-riddled areas around here? I mean
Most of our facilities, as council's pretty aware, have not received, in my opinion, adequate budgeting for maintenance. And that has been one of the priorities that council set before us, prior councils, as we bring new facilities or renovated facilities online as we start to try. So my recommendation on these has been, one, that also Civic Events, for instance, look at their budget as the C V B did, and make sure that their budget that they bring forward then is adequate to help starting to do some of the maintenance items that I think council and Charlotte has been a fan of that, as set as a priority. So some of these, like the roof, are ones that should have been looked at years ago, but there hasn't been funding in place for those things to happen. They've been on the capital list of needs, but there hasn't been a funding source identified. So this is a potential funding source for those capital items that have been listed for several years in some cases.
I don't see the railroad building roof that
That's happening today.
It is being replaced today?
Not the whole roof. They're putting the tiles on.
Thank you.
Ms. Farmer, we are glad to hear you talk about setting money aside for roofing. We started some of that discussion last year during budget about beginning to adopt more of a save more upfront, borrow less as we do the project. And we'd like to continue that, continue that discussion. And so we welcome
I don't have a problem spending our newfound monies on maintenance items in our streets and roofs that we've had to defer because of no money. But to start new projects or wish lists, I'm totally against it. That's just my feeling in it before we get into budget talks.
Well, we certainly have some deferred maintenance opportunities, and we'll be interested in hearing what your priorities are. Wayfinding is a project that goes back a few years, and just has to do with signage around town, and then a forklift for operating the convention center and the Coliseum. And so these were items which were brought forth. It's not necessarily an all-inclusive list. It doesn't have to be this list. We wanted you to be aware of those, and so you could be thinking about those. And we'll continue this conversation. We'll, if you'll go back to the checklist, or the, there we go. Today's the concept discussion. We've planted those seeds. We'll come back with a legal discussion, and we'll move from there.
Further comment from the council? Well, this is a very nice problem to have. It's not as in past years. But I have always said we need a savings account, so I don't want to spend everything we get. I'd like to put some of it back because we don't know what, we don't know what the future holds. So
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. And Rick, Michael, what's the difference between wayfinding Phase 1, the 300,000, and the river corridor wayfinding, 150,000?
Carl can speak to it too, but there's, there are different components of the wayfinding. And as they've looked through that, and actually, the wayfinding component as a whole was even much bigger than that. I don't remember the total number. Carl may have it. But we broke the river corridor out because there was discussion of whether that should be, is something we should attempt to fund through hot money, or if we have additional funds from the river project, if we should try to fund that through that component. So there is a component within the wayfinding that is specific to signage, directing people down to the river and so forth, and activities down there.
That's all I need. Morgan, you don't have to go into it.
Comments from the, from the public. Mr. Turner, step up, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner. One of the things that needs to be discussed while you're discussing the legal restrictions and so on, is the likely impact you have of the exemption you have for long-term contracts at these motels. If the rooms get occupied by people here for the oil boom for over 30 days, and those rooms are no longer generating hot funds, a projection on that, because that would negatively impact the amount of money that comes in. We could have full hotels not very much hot coming in, just because they're all taken up by oil boom personnel and stuff like that. Just a projection, because this is going to be just a wild guess, crystal ball-type stuff. But how much impact that could have, based on what we've seen happen in other cities, other areas, would be useful. So if nothing else, it's going to even make the need for this long-term fund balance higher, because we may have a drought in the middle of a hotel occupancy boom where we're not getting a lot of occupancy tax. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this? Have any suggestions? If not, this was just a, this was just a discussion item. Y'all can bring back what you need, and as we talk about it, we talk about this further. Let's move on to item number 11. This is Carl White. It's a consideration of approving the allocation of $30,000 of hotel occupancy tax revenues to a city event account, and the creation of revenue and expenditure accounts for city events, primarily River Fest. Mr. White?
It sounds like council may not be ready to take action on this, but at least it gives me the opportunity to talk about this event. This event, a little bit of history about this event. This is the first logo that we're looking at having for the event. But River Fest, we're scheduling for the 18th and 19th of October of this year. And we talked about it about a year ago, that with the completion of the river project, and with the 100th anniversary of Santa Fe Park coming up, we really need to step up and host a big event. The city doesn't really host any events outside of Christmas Old Fort Concho and the Lilly Fest. Typically, cities kind of step up and host larger community events like this. So we think it's time for us to step up and have a large event.
Might use some of our excess to pay our light bill.
We've got the completion of the river project coming up, the 100th year anniversary of the acquisition of Santa Fe Park, which is primarily the golf course in Kids Kingdom Park. We've got a blossoming art, art that's growing in the river corridor and in public places. We want to celebrate that, and we want to just generally celebrate life in San Angelo. This, I'd like to explain, this event isn't a recreation of Fiesta del Concho or the Concho Festival that the Junior League had a few years back. That event had a lot of vendors and arts and crafts. This event does not have this. It's primarily activity-based. We've come together with lots, several folks, and we, a committee has been meeting every other week since about January to talk about what this event could be. We've joined with the Convention Visitors Bureau, Downtown San Angelo, Art and Uncommon Places. They're the ones who are behind a lot of the river art. The Girl Scouts, Good Fellow, of course, our own internal departments, Angelo State University, San Angelo Host, Citywise Marketing, the Museum of Fine Arts, Sealy Flats, Race Texas, and Two Pro Club Management. Just a quick visual of the event, and I'll show you a schedule here in a minute. But just starting in the West, we'll have tours of the Waterlit Collection. It's still quite viewable at that time of year, up until the end of October. Golf tournament, Santa Fe Golf Course, a color run, a color up run. I'll explain more about that in a second. Children's activities, concessions, and maybe some music at Kids Kingdom. The Sculpture Garden will have the salmon sculpture competition unveiling on the Friday night. Canoe and kayak races by the Girl Scouts, skate, skating demonstration at the skate park, games at the new games court area, bocce ball, chess, and washers. Games at the new games court area, bocce ball, chess, and washers. A carnival at the old NEFS area. Cardboard boat regatta by Celebration Bridge unveiling, hopefully have more art at Firefighters' Memorial City Park. Paddle boats for the public to enjoy. Bands at the River Stage Friday night and Saturday night. Perhaps some activities at the Old Town. The color up run actually would start at Fort Concho and then hopefully a balloon lift and glow at the Paseo Grounds. A quick look at the schedule. If this, if this works the way we hope it does, it'll kick off Friday evening with the salmon sculpture competition reveal, have music at the River Stage Friday night. We'll start back up Saturday morning at nine o'clock with a color up run. Also concurrently have the golf tournament, Santa Fe Golf Course. Activities for the kids starting at 10:30 with the official kickoff with the mayor kicking us off at 11 o'clock at Kids Kingdom Park. Two to 3:30 have, with a vintage baseball game at Kids Kingdom Park and then games and paddle boats and other activities at the games court area, late morning, early afternoon. The canoe and kayak races, the carnival would start at noon or perhaps a little bit later at NEFS. The skate demonstration, the tours of the Water Lily Collection, the cardboard boat regatta, the balloon lift, and then the laser light show at the River Stage, which would be free to the public. And I would like to mention that this, this whole event is free to the public, there's no admission charge. Now, there are exceptions for some of the music Saturday night, which would be ticketed and that would be the headliner groups that we're looking at bringing Saturday night. A little bit on the color up run and you may have seen a little bit about this recently. This is a more recreational run. It's not a, not a competitive run and you may have seen some things in the news lately about these, but it's a way to actually make a 5K run more fun. And so what this event is, is basically taking food starch, colored food starch, and different locations where you go along the run, you get pelted by these packets of coloring, which makes it kind of exciting and...
That does beat rotten fruit, though.
Like a tomato run, which makes it, you know, you anticipate coming up to the color area where you're gonna get hit with color and it's, they're spaced out along the route, so it kind of adds a layer of fun to the run. Going back just a second, we want to start this at Fort Concho because it has, it's a great place to start because that's where our city started, at Fort Concho. It makes a great route for 5K to start at the fort and at the Paseo and then of course we have lots of parking available. Right now, I believe we have 1,200 people already signed up for this run. This run could happen even if Riverfest doesn't happen, so it's not waiting on any approval from council in terms of funding for this. And the route would start at the fort, go up Oaks, downtown Concho, back along the river, around Santa Fe Golf Course, cross the river on the south side, along the new trail section, and then end at the Paseo. These are anticipated costs. The reason why we're asking for, for money for this, and I understand you may not want to make a decision today, but the reason we're asking for this is so we can make some commitments for the event. If we don't get this money, we're still going to have an event. It would just be scaled down fairly substantially. But if we do get the money, then we can make some commitments this summer to bring in things like the laser light show. That really is waiting a commitment from us to actually get it on the schedule. We hope to bring all the bands in either underwritten or paid by, covered by a promoter through ticketed revenue. And of course, we have different expenses for security, insurance, portable restrooms, and that really depends on how many people we anticipate getting. Dumpsters and tracks, trash collection, temporary labors, advertising and marketing, volunteer support primarily for breakfast and lunch so they don't have to worry about that during the event. And our estimated costs are $30,000. Now, the reason we're asking for seed money so we can create this, so we can make commitments, but we anticipate bringing in some revenue to cover those expenses to, to help make this a perpetual event. And we hope to get that revenue from sponsorships, in-kind donations, carnival proceeds, concession proceeds, the sale of novelties like t-shirts. And then the color up run is part of their registration, $5 that everybody pays for that registration would go to a specific charity. In this case, our selected charity is re-grinning of the river corridor, planting new trees when the time is right. And then right now, the estimated economic impact approaches a million dollars and that really depends on how many people attend the event and how many people from out of town attend that event.
What you're describing is Fiesta del Concho.
It is, but it doesn't have all the vendors and the arts and crafts.
Ms. Farmer, you may speak now.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. It does, it sounds like Fiesta del Concho involved with when it was here 30 years ago and, and it was great fun, brought a lot of people in, economic impact. What I don't see is how much income you think that you will make because there's, could be potentially a whole lot more than the $30,000 expense, but I don't want to spend the money. I, I truly don't. It's, it's only $30,000 and it's great, but it's still an expense of, of money that we don't have yet.
Seeing a lot of deferred maintenance in the previous presentation, I'm not for it.
Don?
Say, I'm not for it either. I wouldn't have as much problem if you can show me a revenue stream to where it would be a loan instead of a, a $30,000 giveaway. I just, if, I'm not sure we're gonna, if people come in from out of town, we're gonna have enough beds to put them in anyway, so I'm a little skeptical about the, the million dollars in, in impact also, but it's my feelings.
Isn't this an activity that as a rule the chamber would do?
They don't have to do it. There's no rule saying that they have to do it and the city can't do it.
Rodney?
I totally agree with Charlotte. I think, why did y'all go away from the vendors, though? Why did, why wouldn't we try to get more vendors involved and have them pay for the $30,000? Was there a reason for that?
Early on, when we talked about the scope of the event, we, we decided, we decided not to have vendors at this time.
Okay. Well, I don't agree with it. I'm, I'm totally with them. I, I'm not for putting any more money into it.
Part of that is...
Unless it was a loan, unless we did talk about doing what Winkie said, do a loan of some sort and we know that we're gonna get that, that money back.
To expand on what Carl said, part of the deal is, is that, of course, everybody knows the, when Fiesta was here, that was a chamber run event, that was not a city run event. So this started off as just an attempt to celebrate the completion of the river project, those things that everyone's pretty excited about. So it was an attempt to, to do that and maybe something would start from it that would continue on. Carl, as he stated, you know, $30,000, it's a new event, so it's very hard for staff to predict what revenue that may or may not bring in as a first-year event. So he may get sponsors who step up and cover the entire $30,000, he may not. And so that's why he was very clear that it, it wouldn't be at this point, he can't predict what that would be on a first-year event.
Maybe he'll know better next year.
Well, that's possible or we, or we won't have it, or as Carl said, we can scale it down to something that doesn't require any financial commitment from the city.
John?
In my humble opinion, I like the idea from the get-go. I think in looking at your presentation, the only concern I had was, I was hoping it 'd all be free and the million dollars, I agree with Don, it's kind of hard to get a, grasp a hold of. We would hope it would have that economic impact. The ticketed event on the Saturday night is, hmm, it kind of, you know, leaves a kind of bad taste in my mouth. I would hope it'd be free to the public, but again, you know, I like the idea, I like the concept. Maybe this turns into an annual event, I don't know, but in my humble opinion, my opinion only, I would, I would support the idea other than the discussion and the concern about the, the Saturday night event. And another question, where are you, are we anywhere on sponsorships? Where anything's come in?
We've got some nibbles, but nothing firmly committed yet.
And this is in October, we've got a little bit of time, so maybe if we can come up with even half of the 30, maybe we could support it even further, but that's just me talking. Thanks.
Charlotte?
I want to make very clear in all of my time on the council, of all the staff who has prepared and provided me with very thorough information before council meeting on every project, it has been Carl. The research that he does and the communication that he puts out to the council, I'm very, very appreciative. You do an outstanding job of providing that information before we come to council. I just, it's nothing against the work you've done, it's been outstanding. I just, the amount of deferred maintenance around the city that needs to be done and after an event like this, then we would have to re-grass and redo and a whole bunch of stuff that we've just got going. I agree with the kickoff of the river that has been done, I just don't want to commit the $30,000.
Don, you and Winkie satisfied? Is down here satisfied? I, I feel basically the same way. I, I don't like the $30,000 either. However, I'm not, I'm not completely opposed to putting some money in it, maybe some seed money, but there need to be some matching funds and we really know, need to know what we're getting. And from what I see of consensus right here, I don't think you want a decision today, so maybe you can go back and do a little more figuring and bring this back to us and you might be able to find something that kind of sits in the middle somewhere that we could support. Is that about the way we're hearing it? John?
I'd like to add, Carl, that I appreciate you guys putting this idea together because, and again, I'm all for it because if all we have to look forward to is the rodeo, which I love the rodeo, carnival and all that, and then maybe the boat races, really, that's it. I mean, this city is, is dead after that.
Christmas at Old Fort Concho.
Even that, but you know, some fun activities like this, don't give up on the idea. I think even this being publicized, maybe it'll open up doors for you, for, for some sponsorships, but don't let the idea, you know, go away. If you guys can pull it off with some private monies out there, go for it. I mean, I think our city needs it and it's, you know, just a fun activity and I'm all for it.
So it sounds like there is support for doing the event, but just not the, the seed money?
You're, you're on the right track.
Okay.
Just kind of put it together and see if you can come up with something, maybe we can do some compromising on. Is there any thoughts, any thoughts from the public on this? Is there any else, anyone wants to speak to this? Come forward and state your name and state your opinion.
Good morning. My name is Louis Bettis. I'm currently the chairman for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Board and just a couple of comments real quickly. As chair, sitting where you sit, Mayor, we're trying to gauge the temperature and the, the atmosphere of the, of the current new council and congratulations to all the new council members. And so I know that this item, we had, had a vote and the consent unanimous vote was to approve and to bring forward to city council. And so hearing what I'm hearing today, and then I know we've had another item on the agenda from previous meetings where the same thing, unanimous decision, and it was completely, it was voted down as well. So as your chairman, give us some direction, some guidance or some feedback as to, is this the direction we need to take from now on or, or how do we, should we proceed from here forward or?
I think you're doing, I think you're doing a great job. I mean, you have, you've, you've come together as a, as a committee, you've made, you've made your decision, you've gone through Carl, you brought it to us, you see what we think about it.
Okay.
You know that it's a viable thing, we want it, but it's gonna have to be something that we can justify to our taxpayers, so...
Of course.
I think you're on the right track. I just think you may need to just tweak it a bit.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just want to make sure and...
That's my opinion. Y'all agree with me?
I just say this, we're, we're not party poopers, but there's been, election was just held and there's been turnover in the council and I know all these people personally and we're just gonna have to reprioritize some of our things and we've got our own particular priorities since we're a new council and so everybody's just gonna have to understand that.
Okay. And I'm, and with all due respect, Councilman Wardlaw, we just want to make sure the transition from this old council to the new council is in correlation and runs parallel with, with the Parks and Recreation Board as well. And so we just, because we're the representatives that are representing your, the council members.
I've been the one that's been working for a year, over a year, trying to get the trees watered down at Santa Fe Park. I'm not against the parks at all.
Correct.
But we, we only have so much money and we have to prioritize and this council's just not gonna agree with the last council and a bunch of them ran for, ran in the election and they lost. So that needs to tell you something.
Okay.
You're on the right track. You're on the right track. Mr. Mayor?
For me, it's wonderful and it's a great thing for San Angelo and to have people to come and do and you've done a very thorough job and I, as I said, Carl, that it's a thorough job in, in representing it, but where we are right now today, even though we've got some monies coming in, water.
Sure.
Our concentration and our focus of our monies has to be on water and I'm just reluctant to spend $30,000 here, $50,000 there, $100,000 here, when we still have not tied down our problems of having a long-term water source. That's where I'm coming from.
Rodney, closing remarks?
I'm, I'm totally for the Riverfest deal, 100%. I think it's a very, very good thing. I, I agree with Charlotte and Mr. or Councilman Wardlaw that we, the city should not be putting any money into this. This has to be corporate-based in my, that's my opinion, but I think if, if we can get the corporate sponsors to step up and help us out on this, but as a city, I just don't believe we should be putting, putting any money, in my opinion, no money into this.
Okay.
We have so many other things that had, that really have been deferred for years and years and years. We, we're so far behind on our street maintenance that it's just unbelievable. We may never, ever catch up. So to me, I think that you really have to set the priority on the monies and this is not one of my priorities. I wouldn't, I definitely would not be for putting money into it. I'm 100% for the idea of it.
Stalweno? Yes, sir.
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I, I agree with the project wholeheartedly. The, the money truly is a problem, but when we discuss this council or prior councils, you know, I think maybe the, the, the other thing you were talking about maybe was the West One deal.
The Little League.
Yeah, Little League project and, and I, I think there was probably a consensus on that and I think it's moving forward anyway, but I, I think it was just a matter of how we got there that, but I, I think you keep plugging and keep bringing them and, and, you know, I think this is a single and I think, I think there's a home run. I, I think prior councils were possibly, when you talk about priorities, possibly wasn't, prior councils was, was not focused on maintenance as much as it is now and I think that's kind of backed us into a corner because of prior councils, so I can, I think you keep plugging and, and you'll hit the home run.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blaskis?
Just a point of clarification, the money that we're talking about is hot money and you cannot use that money for street repair or anything else, so just wanted to set that stage up first. So second, second thing is Downtown San Angelo is supportive of this initiative. We've been involved from the beginning in terms of developing the, the plans that you see or have heard about today. And we are, as you saw in our financials, we're a little bit on the hole right now. Part of it is because we are sponsoring the, the color up run. We're, we're donating $2,000 for that initiative. But in general, I think that the project in itself will eventually pay the city back in a lot of different ways. We know right now, just on the color up run, that about 50% of the people that are signed up are coming in from out of town. They're not local San Angelo folks that are gonna be putting heads in beds. And I understand the point about the hotels, but you know, that's a good problem to have, honestly. I think it's a great problem to have that we, our hotels are full and I think there is room available. If you hear from the Hotel Association, they'll tell you that they, they can make accommodations, so, and there's other ways we can address the issue as we've done in the past through ASU support, et cetera. And ASU's involved in this project, so I think we can overcome the deficit that we're looking at right now. Again, I'm just gonna restate, the, the funding that, that's being requested is to help get this project up and running and can I honestly say to you, oh yeah, we're gonna recover that money? I don't know that at this point, but I see this investment of $30,000 versus the monies that we spent in the project of over 13 or 14 million dollars to rehab the river, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a positive thing for the city.
Is that pretty well covered? Anybody else in the public want to speak? I think if you'll come, I think... I think if you'll come, I think if you'll bring it back to us with some, with some changes, I believe you can get it passed, but I don't think we want to do it today. All right?
I understand.
Let's move on to the, yes.
Excuse me, so are we taking action, Mayor? Are we taking action then?
That's up to the council.
Right.
Do we want to take counsel? Do we want to bring something back to us that's, that's more agreeable? Somebody make me a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this item as presented and if it gets shot down, then we'll bring it back. But I'll make a motion to approve it, okay?
That's the way to start it.
Just for the sake of discussion.
Have we got a second? I hear no second. May I hear another motion?
I'll make the motion for Carl to take the information back and see what the feels or commitments he could get from sponsors to cover this expense or possibly, you know, from the chamber or elsewhere to cover the expense.
Second. I'll second that.
Sounds like a good motion. That ought, that ought to take care of the legality, shouldn't it? All right, we've got a motion that you take this back, you look at it again, you tweak it, you see what you can do to make it more palatable to the seven of us and then bring it back and we'll discuss it again. Any further discussion on this? All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. There's your instructions, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next one is item twelve and if you want to make a motion to postpone this, Charlotte, we'll entertain you right now.
I'm going to make a statement if I may, since I asked that the item come forward. I have looked at the work that has been done and presented to us today as far as costs, et cetera, and so forth and where we are now, but what I had asked for was the projected cost from Corella on the bid for the Hickory project versus what has been spent to date. That's what is not in there, so it's not as I requested and while the information is good, I've looked at it, it still does not give me what I asked for and the reason I asked for it, in looking at expenses of various projects and stuff, whether it's been half cent sales tax money or other monies, we're overspending what was budgeted or what was bid. And I just want to stop the overspending, unnecessary spending. And I am particularly had requested information with reference to the cost of the engineering so far to date and to look at the contract and, and see if there were excesses there because I personally feel there's excesses. So, I do not want to talk about the subject until we can get those items to go with it, so we do not piecemeal this subject out.
Make a motion, please, ma'am.
That is my motion to postpone this until the next council meeting when we have the information that I had requested on June eighteenth.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. There is a motion on the floor to postpone this until we get every bit of the information that has been requested and we want it all. We want to know what has been spent and we want to know exactly how it's been spent and we want it made public so that the, so that the public knows it as well as, as we did. Any other comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Yes, sir.
I totally agree with Ms. Farmer, because even though it says update and presentation, we can talk numbers all day long without seeing, I see, what you're wanting is a PowerPoint presentation showing numbers, showing figures and I don't think, I don't know how much clearer you can make that, but I totally agree that we, we need to see, I'm more of a visual guy and.
Mr. Silas, the information is out there. I don't get paid to dig out and tell them where it is and to compare it and provide it for all of you guys. That's what staff gets paid to do and that's what I want to see.
Let me ask one last que, is your concern, are you hearing that we've gone over the hundred and twenty million dollar mark? Are we going or?
No.
I.
You really don't know.
Don't know until I see it.
Okay. Fair enough.
Any other comments? Public, anybody want to weigh in on this? If not, I have a motion on the floor to postpone this until we get the information that we want. I also have a second. This time I will ask for a show of votes. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bring it back to us, please. All right, now we go to item number thirteen and this is drought levels and related matters as outlined in the water conservation drought contingency plans. Anybody have a problem discussing this one? Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. As requested last time that council at that, the last meeting wanted to, us to bring back ordinance with consideration for changing to drought level three trigger points. We said we'd do that on the second meeting in July and I just wanted to have a short discussion on our current stuff that we're, that we're in right now to make sure that we don't need to change anything out and make sure of exactly what the trigger points or any changes that need to be made so we can get that right on our next meeting agenda. So, I just want to go over some of the highlights of, of where we're at and see if there's any interest in making any other changes besides any early into drought level three. Currently, our drought level consists of three parts, one, two, and three. And I guess the parts that I'm concerned about are the conditions and the trigger points that go into each drought level. Drought level one, the developed water sources is less than a twenty-four month supply and that allows watering outside twice over seven days during the period from May first, October thirty-first, and once over fourteen days from November to March thirty-first. And I just want to know, is everybody comfortable with drought level one? Do you want to change the trigger points, the amount of water available? Do we need to change any of that or are we all good with that one? At least someplace to start.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to look at changing all the stages and the dates on all those and pushing them back. So, that, in my opinion, I think we should go to drought level two at twenty-four months and raise the, the twelve month to the three from twelve to probably fifteen or sixteen, somewhere in there, and raise all the levels up.
What?
Water is the most important thing we have going for us and we don't have it.
Correct.
Mr. Wardman?
I'm sorry.
Go, no. I'm sorry.
What I'd like to propose is just move everything back twelve months from the way it is here. And, you know, that way it just extends the time and hopefully gives us more time for rains or, or, you know, whatever needs to be done. I, I just think we're, we're a little bit behind on, on our restrictions as far as, as what we're doing.
Well, I have. Yeah, I have a little bit different take. Only time in my life I've ever disagreed with Don. But, one, a couple of comments I'll make. Number one is in two thousand twelve, the city council, which has changed, reworked all this and Ricky, I don't know if you were around at the time, but we worked, reworked all this stuff and of course, we've got a little bit less water now, although maybe really not because we got lower than this at the end of Sept, in September last year. But, being a businessman and operating businesses around, what the council needs to understand is unintended consequences of, of keeping people from watering. And businesses have landscaping, they have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in their landscaping. And while I'm, I'm not too hot on grass, landscaping is an expensive item owned by business. It also affects what, what your property taxes are, your valuation of your property. And if you tighten this thing up too much, you're going to be looking like Odessa, Texas. And so, you got to be careful. You know, those tall trees that die, they, you know, they don't, you can't replant those and, and landscaping costs a lot of money. And I just ask the council to be careful about that and I'm one of the ones in that boat and I'll admit it. But I don't have, I don't really want to lose a hundred thousand dollars worth of landscaping and I don't want to lose my trees either and I don't think anybody else does. And, you know, if, the way, the way that the ordinance is structured right now is when we go to drought stage level three, we spend a lot of time working on that and we have the right to water trees and we have the right to water foundations to keep us from losing those and, and all having catastrophic losses. And so, here again, we get back to the unintended consequences and I don't think, I don't think you better, better jettison all that and just go to a hard, you know, hard count on all this. And I would point out, for those of you don't know, but John Bagnow knows and I know, and that is, that the city of Lano made this mistake in two thousand and twelve, for those of you who drive to Austin. And they, they cut off all outside watering and about half their trees died and then it rained about thirty or sixty days later and, and the river filled up right there by Lano, but yet they're stuck with this devastation for the rest of their lives. So, I'm just asking everybody to keep that in mind.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Marty?
Well, I, I think I'm somewhere trying to stand on top of the fence. I, I agree with, with Councilman Wardlaw, Wardlaw, I think we need to be very careful on, when we go to, go to three and stop certain watering. I, I do agree in moving them up, but I think we need to look at what's in them and possibly change. I, I could care less what my front yard looks like as far as grass. I, I am concerned about what my shrubs look like at, at my business and at, at my house. So, I guess I'm kind of in between. I think we should take stage two probably and, and make it stage one and leave it stage one forever and be in that stage, but once we get more restrictive, I think we need to have allowances in there for, for certain things, i.e. shrubs and, and possibly pools. So, I don't know if that does anything for you, but that.
No, it confuses a matter worse.
Okay, good.
So, yeah.
Well, and I, I have no problem with compromise. I, I just think that, you know, we need to start our, probably what Marty said, start our restrictions sooner rather than later. You know, I love big trees and shrubs also, but, you know, and that's, that's why I was saying if we, if we move our times around, I think we're going to accomplish that with, with what's in the ordinance.
Ricky, let me say one, another way what Don, I think Don is saying, he and I have talked about this a lot. I think what bugs Don is in drought stage level, I guess, what two, that you're entitled to water.
Once over seven days.
He, he wants to water once a week rather than twice a week and that's what bugs him and I think he's got a valid point about that. And that may, that may be in drought stage one.
Drought, drought stage one is twice over seven days. Drought stage two is once over seven.
Once a week, yeah.
Drought stage one is less than twenty-four months. Drought stage two is less than eighteen months.
Ricky, aye.
You're looking.
I'm trying, man.
You got that glaze over, look.
I am trying.
Deer in the headlights.
Yeah.
How many month supplies do we have now today?
Well, I didn't run the numbers today. Yesterday, it was fifteen point seven five.
Fifteen months.
Months. A little over, almost sixteen months.
Because I'm willing to bet and I wish I would have asked for it to be included in this presentation. And I, I totally understand, I agree with Mr. Wardlaw on the business end of it. You know, businesses have to use water, but I've always harped and I've been accused of going into a, doing a, being a part of a witch hunt, but the residential folks out there who are using sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred thousand gallons a month is what blows me away. And that is, my concern is, it doesn't matter what stage level you label it, I think folks are going to use the water as they will please. You know, if they can afford it, they're going to use it. And it's sad because they're draining all of us out of, you know, the supply. But I guarantee you, I wish I would have asked for the numbers again on the eighty to a hundred thousand gallons, residential, eighty to a hundred thousand gallons a month and we'd be surprised if folks, it doesn't even faze them. So, I just want to throw that in.
Any further comment?
I'd like to.
Yes, ma'am.
To me, the key is conservation and I look at the numbers daily in, in the newspaper as to what our consumption has been here in San Angelo. And occasionally, we go over the consumption of last year, this time to date, but it, what it's telling me is our people are conserving. They have cut back. But I, I totally agree with what Mr. Wardlaw said and it's not just the trees, foundations. I have a piece of rental property that we literally had to redo the foundation because it cracked. I mean, it's lack of water and it's twenty-one thousand dollars. These are serious items that are, we went through this when we redid things and advised that, you know, they could use the soaker hoses around their foundations to help, you know, that particular, not to cause that type of injury or expense, but conservation efforts are being practiced. They could be better. I just wish that in our, you know, this is the only wording, if it's eighteen months, we have to do this. I mean, you know, there are extenuating circumstances that we had discussed, what, a month or two ago, that possibly could be added or not added.
This is a discussion item only and you're asking for, you're asking for.
I'm asking for directions because at the next meeting, I need to bring something back as requested and right now, I got nothing. And I do not want to have to stand up here and be, and be told that I didn't bring back what was needed as I have today. So, I'm trying to get, what do you want to change in this for me to bring back the ordinance?
Ricky, let me take a shot at one.
Go ahead, Mr. Wardlaw, you've got the floor now.
Oh, thank you. I'd like, I'd take a shot at one thing, is just get rid of twice, twice a week watering in drought stage number one and that'll get us down the road a pretty good ways and then we can, other people can come up with their own ideas and modify that to some extent, but that, that's going to get rid of a big part of, of your, of your use right there is the twice a week watering.
Okay. And last council meeting, it was stated you want to go into drought level three right now. Now, is that still the intent of the council or do you want to leave it at twelve, less than twelve month supply?
Not my intent.
Okay.
Mayor, may I address that?
Excuse me.
And I'll be brief. We went through this in two thousand and twelve and I wasn't on the council, but we got John Bagnow in and he addressed the council and we met and went over all this. And here's the thing about it, what he tell, will tell you, and he's dead on, he's a number one probably horticulturist in the state of Texas as far as I'm concerned. He says, when you're getting somewhat short of water, you do not, you want to try to stretch out and do not cut off watering until the middle or end of September, until the temperature starts cooling off and we get a chance of additional rains in the fall, but don't, you don't cut it off one month early in the heat of the summer. If, if you've got the sixteen months left, it would be foolhardy to do that because what happens is you stress and, and kill your landscaping where if you just, one more month or forty-five days is not going to make a difference in our water supply here in San Angelo. And Mr. Bagnow was able to convince the prior council that that was a prudent thing to do.
Okay. All right. So, what, what I've heard so far, let me just recap. The only thing that I've got right now is in drought level two where we're allowed twice a week watering, we're going to change that to once a week.
Drought one.
Two or one?
One.
Drought one.
Yeah.
Okay. Drought level one, not twice a week, once a week.
Right.
And I would have no problem.
Marty, were you waiting?
No, let him go.
Okay, Don.
Sorry, Matthew. I, I have no problem looking at the figures Johnny's talking about also and maybe above some of the, the amounts as far as gallons and residential occupancies are used, looking at those for, for some higher charges, some of those sort of things.
Are you ta, are you talking on the residential, are you talking sprinkler meters only or are you talking about total consumption?
I would imagine total. Yeah, total is right.
And that, that number that you want to see, total consumption residential, is what? What was those gallons that you wanted to see? Those above what?
I know that the, on the higher end, it was between eighty and a hundred thousand gallons a month residential. Can you imagine that?
I can. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Silva's asked for is a list of, how many users have we got at eighty or above?
Eighty or above?
Because...
Residential accounts.
If we got 'em over a hundred, Johnny, you wanna know that also, right?
Does everybody above eighty?
Why don't we start at fifty thousand and above?
Everybody above fifty thousand?
Yes. Just for us to get, to see the bigger picture of, are we conserving? And we were supposed to be in this conservative mode, but I guarantee you, it's not happening.
You're, you're gonna bring us numbers, right?
Numbers.
Not names.
No, just...
Not names.
Are you in that list?
No, I'm not only, I'm, I'm far from that list, but I...
No, I'll leave the names off, I'll just bring addresses, how that work?
Not even, no.
Okay.
Ricky, one other thing.
Yes, sir. Are you waiting?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Wardlaw. And, and before you speak out, I want you to address me. I will tell y'all when to speak, and as long as someone has the floor, they can speak. When they give that floor up, someone else will speak that I tell to speak. We're not gonna speak out, we're not gonna override, and we're not gonna take people's time. So, before anyone on this council speaks, hit me in the head with something, or ask me, or do something, I will tell you when to speak. Is that fair? Counsel, is that fair?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Wardlaw.
I would like for you to go back, Ricky. I think, I think we do ourselves a disservice if we just look at the last year or two. You know, I was back, I was on the council years ago, and the use was much, much higher, and we continually raised water rates. And do you remember back ten years ago, wasn't, wasn't our annual use about twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand acre feet of water a year?
Well, I, I know back, I, I pulled records back the last six, well, no, it was further than that, it was back there. We was up at twenty-one, twenty-two thousand acre feet for sure, five or six years ago, so...
Yeah, I think it was more than that back in ten years ago.
Yeah. I mean, back there for a while, we was pushing forty-two million a gallon through the plant, so it was pretty tall, but we hadn't water, so...
So, we, we cut back, we've cut back over, over the years. We've cut back quite a bit on our use, and that, that also affects the revenue to the water department, too.
And the conservation efforts that the public is doing is great, and it is affecting revenues.
Anyone else? My only, my only, and the last thought on this, 'cause this is a discussion item, but when we start doing these restrictions, and people are not able to water with city water, they go to reservoir aquifers on the north end and the south end, and they buy water that too many people in this town depend upon as their only source of drinking water. So, when we start restricting city water, we are hurting people in the outlying areas of our town, and we also need to be very aware of that. And with that, I will ask if there's any public opinion on this, and then we're gonna move on.
Could I say one more thing, just to make sure?
Yes, sir.
I'm bringing back a ordinance at the next council meeting that changes drought level one from twice a week watering to once a week watering, and I'm bringing back ever the numbers above fifty thousand total residential.
Any other instructions, counsel?
Combined domestic and, and sprinkler.
Yes.
Thank you.
That all right with counsel?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Joseph?
Anne Joseph, thank you. A couple of quick points or questions also. One, commenting about trees' foundations. Primo, trees are so important. It just kills me to see all the dead trees, especially on the north side of town, because of the drought that we've been dealing with. I'm wondering if regarding when to start drought one, two, and three levels, if we could look at what are trees gonna need at a, at a minimum to survive, and then apply that mode to drought level one right off the bat, like you were saying, start it sooner, and then we can perhaps have a longer time for the water supply. Regarding commercial landscaping, you know, trees are important, but the rest of this stuff can be replaced, in my opinion, and those businesses aren't gonna have business if the town runs out of water, the people are gone. So, I think trees are important, but the rest of this stuff is replaceable. I understand the question of the cost that businesses incur, but bottom line, we gotta conserve the water. I'll tell you right now, when looking at the question of total consumption allowed for individuals, since trees are important, don't we need to look at the number of trees that each residential address has? Because if we're gonna support a policy that sustains tree maintenance, one residence that has no trees is not gonna need as much water as one that has more. Just throwing that out there for consideration. Also, I don't know if this policy is still in existence, but I remember recently going through all this in recent years, and hearing that people who went beyond a certain level would be levied a higher price, a higher cost that they'd have to pay. And I'm over here thinking, either we are or are not short on water, what's going on that people who have the money to pay more can use more water? I don't agree with that concept. It's, if, if, if people that have the money to be able to pay more, I'm sorry, they should not be using more water. Their grass needs to die, just as anybody else's, to get the town through this tough time. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, and then, just to ask, 'cause it looked like people were kinda going towards a decision, but I, I made a note that we need to discuss, to study this question in depth, and seriously consider everything before coming to a final decision on what exactly is gonna ident, be identified as drought level one, two, or three, and then implementing that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jamie Lee Taper. I agree with Charlotte Farmer on conservation. I don't wanna go to drought three. I also am an adopted spot, well, a park for Bell Park here in San Angelo, Texas, and I hated it when we went to drought three last year, because the giant oak that's been there for longer than I am alive died during that process of drought and everything, and I hated to see that thing die and everything, and now it's just, you know, slowly rotten off till the limbs fall off, and, you know, until they can eventually get it cut down. But, I now also agree with Wardlaw, you know, about saving the trees. I don't mind, and Mike Hitchcock and Roger Havlock and Carl White, you know, I discuss things with them on a regular basis, and do the reports and everything for the park. I don't mind the mesquite trees, you know, going bye-bye, but I want my, I would like all the oak trees to stay, you know, all the acorn trees. We, there's even a, a redwood kind of tree from California and everything, because that provides shade. I agree, not so much on, with you about, you know, the landscape and the greenery. You know, I see your points and everything, but, and I pray about everything. I pray for God to protect the park, you know, and I pray about so many different subjects when it comes to rain and everything else. And God has always provided rain for the park at Bell Park and everything. I've never, during the whole time I've had the park, we've never used water, because I can't afford it, and I really don't want it coming out of the city's pocket in the first place. So, God just, you know, where I live, we've had rain the past five, six times now, just a little bit at a time, but, you know, it kinda keeps the park going and everything. And I would like to, I really don't know a lot more to say than what I do, that Charlotte Farmer mentioned about conservation. Now, Standard Times has a deal in the paper, you know, right off the obituaries on the second side, about little tips, you know, that people can do and everything for conserving water. But when we, if we have to go, you know, whether we go to drought one, or we're gonna stick at drought two, but when we have to go like to drought three, is there any way possible, and I know I'd probably get a lot of people against me, but that's tough, 'cause I conserve a lot in my own apartment and everything, even if it's all, even though it's all bills paid. I, that's just the way I was brought up, and that's the way, you know, I live and everything. You know, I only take showers every few days unless I have to, short showers. You know, I water my little lawn in front of my apartment with my dish soap water from dishes. I do hand laundering sometimes, and I use that water. It keeps it nice and green and everything. Where I live, there is well water, but not in the apartments, just on the grounds, and the owners and the management, they want that all green, and, you know, from, from that sort of stuff. But, you know, is there any way, and people are not gonna like me, but is there any way we can, when we have to go to drought two and drought three, is there any way we can restrict the citizens of San Angelo on quit overdoing the water? Because where I live, and the owners of the property, we talk about it a lot and everything, about how many people just, you know, do whatever the hell they wanna do. You know, they don't, they don't give a crud about, you know, where we're at drought-wise. You know, I think I'm the only person, maybe two other people are really trying to conserve our water and everything, but is there some kinda way where we can, you know, really restrict it, or put more conservation tips in Standard Times paper, let them do it online, so it would teach people in our community, 'cause there's a lot of people that are just poot heads, you know, about everything, and they don't wanna do nothing. And then there's people who really wanna learn, and, and will do anything to try and, you know, start conserving better and everything. You know, it's just...
You've got one more minute, Jamie.
That's all, I was gonna say.
Thank you. Jerry, we're getting hungry.
And so am I.
Okay.
So am I. Jerry C., WTOS Council, I've been here before about this drought level. Drought level three, I really don't believe that we have a choice, and I really don't believe that any of you really understand what we're in for, because you haven't yet put in the equation of what this oil boom is gonna bring. These people are gonna need water. And think of, was it Spring Creek, I believe it is? They were selling eight tankers a day to this oil company. Spring Creek is out of water. Spring Creek is out of water right now. You know, we need drought level three, because we're gonna be selling water to these oil companies also. We need drought level three to conserve water, and if there is a special, if there's a problem, if people are having a problem with, with drought level three, and there's, there's some special reason, I think that they should be able to come and get special permission for trees, or, or landscape for businesses or something. I think they should come and be able to get some kinda special permission to, to, to use extra water. But we're going to need drought level three, because people are more important than other things that can be replaced. And we're gonna, we, we, as the citizens of San Angelo, we're going to really have a problem, and I really don't believe that anybody is taking into consideration of what we're really in for down the road with this oil. This oil is, is a two-edged sword, I keep saying, it's a two-edged sword, it's a good thing, and it's a bad thing. Water is gonna be one of the largest problems that we're gonna have. The city's doing everything that they can to, to match this problem, and Mr. Dixon and their crew are doing everything that they can. But, we can do something, too. Water conservation, Ms. Farmer, is exactly right. We need to go to drought level three, and if there's special circumstances, then people that are going through those special circumstances should be able to come to the board and ask for permission to take care of those. Please, think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. You wanna end this up, Charlie?
Yes, I just wanted to say that conservation comes through education, and the city has used Mr. John Begno to film some items with reference to conservation, and how the water runs, and the depth of the water, and it's very simple to understand on Channel Seventeen. Possibly, we need to have a few more spots than he has had, but it is education. I would like to see our Channel Seventeen increase those education spots during these summer months.
I can see right now it's gonna be a lively discussion next time, Mr. Dixon. And always remember, it takes two readings to change an ordinance, so what's not said next meeting can be said at the next one, so I'm looking forward to it. Johnny, you have been waiting seven weeks for number fourteen. Do you wanna wait until after we get...
I can, I can wait another hour, yes, let's wait.
Let's go eat. Let me read, let me read the executive here, 'cause we do have some items to discuss in executive, how many items, Michael? How long is it gonna take us?
We had three planned, but council may not be comfortable discussing all three of those items in executive session, so it may be shorter than that.
Well, we oughta be through, we oughta be through in an hour, shouldn't we? If we tell the people we're gonna be back at one-thirty, we oughta be able, let's just tell people, we're gonna be back at one-thirty, and we're gonna discuss executive items as long as we can discuss them, but at one-thirty, we will reconvene right here. And what we don't cover in executive from twelve to one-thirty, we'll cover after we get through. Executive closed session, executive session under the provision. Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter five-five-one, Open Meeting, Subchapter three, D, Exceptions to Requirements at Meetings Be Open Under the Following Section, Section five-five-one oh-seven-two, To Deliver the Purchase/Exchange Lease or Value of Real Property, Section five-five-one oh-seven-one-two, To Consult with Attorney on a Matter in Which the Duty of the Attorney to the Governmental Body Under the Texas Disciplinary Rules or Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas Clearly Conflicts With This Chapter. It is twelve fifteen, we will be back in open session at one-thirty. Thank you. Let me call the meeting back to order, it is one-thirty-one PM. We're missing one member, but we do have a quorum, so let's go ahead and handle the rest of our meeting. And we have progressed to item number fourteen. Number fourteen is an update and presentation on Medhab LLC Economic Incentive Program, Project, and Councilman Silva's asked for this, and Michael Dane's supposed to explain it to us. Your honor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This would normally be handled by Bob Schneeman, our interim director for economic development. Bob's on the trip to recruit another airline, same place Daniel is, so I'm gonna hit some high points, and I hope, I'll ask your indulgence on the high points part of it, if we wanted a more in-depth recap of what the contract calls for, and, and a little more in-depth review of what's happened. We'll, we'll probably try to get Bob back up here, but I thought we'd make sure we got this on the agenda, had some conversation about it, and gave Mr. Silva's an opportunity to, to talk, or ask questions, or whatever his pleasure was. Recall that Costa DC and Medhab have an agreement for approximately two-point-seven-nine-five million in incentives to be paid based on performance milestones. Recent activity on that includes, in December, Medhab signed a lease with the Contra Valley Center for Entrepreneurial Development, the CVCED, and they moved into the location on West Beauregard. Remember where Costa DC was for a while, and they've got that annex, they've moved into that location in January. Medhab currently has four full-time employees, has plans to hire two additional staff within the next few weeks. Medhab has not requested, nor have they received any incentive payments from Costa DC at this point. The Development Corporation through the CVCED has foregone the collection of rent on that facility in the, and of course, were the terms of the agreement. All other exceptions with the, with the exception of building maintenance issues are borne by Medhab. So, again, they haven't started the big, big hiring that is anticipated, but they, they do see a little bit of growth. They do have some employees at this time. Those are kinda the high points, the latest on that at this time, Mr. Silva's. Of course, we'd be glad to pursue any questions you have, or, or try to bring back a more in-depth review, if that's what you'd like.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Let me respond to that. This was not a Johnny Silva's thing, this was some taxpayers that tagged me into, hey, give us a word on what's happening with that Medhab deal. You know, they, they remember the two-point-seven, seven-nine million dollar project or idea, and, you know, it was...
At this time, Mr. Silva, of course, we'd be glad to pursue any questions you have or, or, uh, or try to bring back a more in-depth review if that's what you'd like.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Let me respond to that. This was not a Johnny Silva's thing. This was some taxpayers that tagged me into, "Hey, give us a word on what's happening with that Medhab deal." You know, they, they remember the 2.79 million dollar project or idea and, you know, it was a tax, it was, bottom line was taxpayers wanting to know what's happening with our money. What's happening? Are, is it being paid? How many employees do they have? You know, I think at one time they anticipated, I don't know, 200 employees or so. We, we're down, you know, we've got four employees and financial impact is zero. And, and that was, really, that was the crux of the whole thing, is what was happening out there with our taxpayer, uh, money? And so you just answered that question is, you know, why it took so long to get here, I don't know, but again, uh, that, that's where we're at.
Charlotte?
Well, I have two questions. One, I'd like to know who COADC is. Uh, I'm, I'm sure it's a typo, but I don't wanna assume that. Good, it's COADC. Uh, and then the other thing is, in monies of this size or any project that we have, have we ever considered or thought about a timeframe? That, uh, certain timeframes that possibly we reduce down the commitment of monies because there's other businesses out there who may need assistance or want help and this money's just sitting there in non-use? I mean, how long is a piece of string, I guess, is what I'm asking? That's my only comments.
And it's a good one.
Thank you.
Shall I respond, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, obviously, you're right. COADC is probably Costa DC. Um, as far as the specific timeframes with the different milestones associated with this contract, we'd be glad to bring back, uh, an itemization of that or a summary of that. Uh, we can do that, uh, as part of a council meeting and a subsequent presentation if you'd like, or, or we can put a summary together, kind of an executive summary together and send it to you in the, in the Friday packets.
I think since we have a member of the Costa DC Board here today, Mr. Bario, uh, John Bario is in the audience, I think just mentioning it and possibly planting the seed, that that would be something that Costa DC should take into consideration and figure out if they should incorporate it or whatever and then bring it to us instead of us telling them to do this. I mean, that's, my preference is to let the Costa DC make a suggestion on that. Uh, Mr. Bario, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, would you like to speak to that or...
And I'm, I'm having a little trouble and Madam Farmer with the concept of Mr. Bario representing the board without having, we don't have the board here as a joint meeting, so...
Fine, can I ask him personally then?
No.
He can't, he has a personal opinion.
No, he really doesn't wear two hats. I just think that would be precarious.
I disagree.
Could I, could I try to respond to some of that?
Sure.
That board and John, of course, if I try to respond, that gives you the right to poke me out of the sharp stick later on if I misspeak, but, um, that board, your concept is a good one. A window of opportunity to achieve, uh, what is necessary to receive benefits. And they have used that concept before. And while I can't speak specifically to this contract, I suspect that, uh, that, what you mentioned, that concept that, you know, within a certain period of time, you must achieve these things. I suspect those, uh, those terms exist in this contract, but having said that, I'd, I'd like to follow up in some way if you don't mind. Uh, maybe we can shoot you a memo with, uh, with an executive summary attached and, and...
As long as you include the Costa DC Board.
I will follow up with them, make sure they know that, that, uh, council is interested.
No, I am. I'm not speaking for the rest of the council. I just think that it's something that, you know, people have not been beating down our doors, to my knowledge, for funds from our half-cent sales tax, but that can change. And, um, it's money laying on the table that is not working, but it's committed funds. And I just wanna look at it.
I'll, I'll back up a request there.
Mayor, would you like, uh, you wanna start with a Friday, an executive summary in Friday packet or would you like an agenda item?
Uh, Friday packet's all right with me if they're all with you.
That's fine.
All right. I don't think we're gonna get that done this Friday if that's all right.
That's fine.
All right.
In a future Friday.
Thank you, John.
Anybody else care to comment on this? Public? Anybody have anything to say about this? Then let's move on. Follow-up and administrative issues. Number 15 is next. Consideration and possible action on matters discussed in executive closed session if needed, and to my knowledge, there's nothing we need to talk about, is there, Alicia?
No.
Okay, moving on to 16.
You're correct.
Pardon me?
You are correct.
Moving on to 16. Consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members. We have Civic Events Board Darlene Jones, appointed by SMD 5 to an unexpired term October 2/14. We've got Development Cooperation Tommy Hebert. This is from SMD 2 to an unexpired term February 2/15. And Richard Crisp, SMD 5, to an unexpired term February 2/14. We have a request from the Planning Commission. This is Terry Jackson, a single-member District 5, to an unexpired term, unexpired term January 2/16. May I have a motion to either accept or to deny?
May for approval.
Second. Do we have comment from the council? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Uh, while I am a member of the Costa DC Board, my name is not on this agenda item, nor do I necessarily speak representing the board. I am here as an individual citizen of the City of San Angelo. Uh, because I am a board member on that board and am sworn to make sure that everything is operated in accordance with bylaws and city ordinances, I would highly recommend that you either separate the three different entities in this, in any motion or action, and consider that by city code and city, uh, I'm sorry, Costa, uh, DC bylaws, uh, I believe we're overstepping authority at this point and these appointments may be premature. Specifically, let me begin with, uh, a quick quote about the Civil Events, pardon me, Civic Events Board from City Ordinance, Section 2.203. Members may be terminated at any time by the council. This is the one item that I think you have authority to proceed on. If there are vacancies that you have terminated, though I have not heard public termination nor acceptance of resignation. It is my opinion that there are no vacancies at this point because you have not yet vacated a position. Let me next address the Planning Commission. Uh, this is again quoting from an ordinance and I, I apologize, I failed to write down the specific section, but if you will search the ordinances and simply type in Planning Commission, it becomes readily evident. After public hearing and for cause, uh, members of that board may be removed. Again, I have not heard that any have resigned. I may simply be in the dark on that. Nor have you officially taken action to remove anyone to create the vacancies you're attempting to fill. And then lastly, the Costa DC, which is under my sworn purview. Under City Code, Section 2.3603, uh, Paragraph B, removals will happen either by resignation or by the majority of the council without cause. In this case, you don't have to say why. And in the company, uh, corporate bylaws of the Costa DC, Article 2, Section 1, Paragraph D, by majority vote of the council at will, may directors be removed. I agree with the changes you are trying to implement. I am here to urge you very strict caution for the legal matter by which you're proceeding. I hope that makes sense. And Alicia, if you could chime in on that with a reading of those or verification of what I read, it will be humbly appreciated.
And what you just read, I'm looking for an email.
I might interject that it's simply my desire that things be done correctly and legally.
Right. I haven't seen your email to which you refer. However, the appointment, there is a, a policy, a uniform policy...
Yes.
...that council passed, uh, in 2012 that provides how board appointments and commission appointments are handled. And so there is a procedure. And so we believe that we're pursuing, um, the changing of the guards according to this procedure and we could read it, I could sit down and show it to you.
May, may I ask you to, uh, specifically with Costa DC, refer to the city ordinances, Section 2.3603, Paragraph B? I see nothing that supersedes that ordinance. And I, I think anything taking it away from the majority of the council would be contradictory to the ordinance.
This is a resolution of council, so that would be council's wishes on how to uniformly handle this type of, uh, appointment. And I think some of the things, I, I need to pull up the section that you're speaking of, but, um, some of the language that I was hearing was about termination and for, for...
Yes.
...cause and such things. And this is a different type of action because, uh, under circumstances that new, um, newly-elected council members, there is a policy which, uh, allows, uh, those newly elected members to appoint, uh, individuals to sit on the boards and commissions. And in doing so, once that appointment is made, the other position, the occupied position is then deemed, it's deemed vacated and it becomes vacated. So the member is not, the, the prior seated appointee is not terminated, uh, the prior seated appointee does not resign, but by allowing the newly-appointed council member to have new appointees, the other position is just vacated and they just switch out.
Then I will, they, I will then back up to the terms. Once appointed, there, in the case of the Costa DC, a two-year term. If by virtue of a council election and placement of new council members whom by this apparently...
Policy, right.
...minimally disseminated policy, uh, if that, if those parties are basically invited to resign or invited to allow someone else to be appointed, then in effect, the council is asking to terminate them.
Ms. Bowling?
And so what, yes, Mayor.
If we were to add, and if Don desires, but if Don were to desire to add to his motion that the current member will be removed and replaced by, would that satisfy this?
That the car...
Because we have the authority to remove and we have the authority to reappoint.
Right.
So if we just said the current...
Well, the language would be that the new person is, the new appointee is going to be nominated and, uh, the, that has to be by the action of council. And by that nomination, the other position is vacated. So I don't think you need to take other action. Did you say removed? It's not a removal type of situation.
We're all right with what, we're all right with the motion that Don made?
Right. Because by the nomination, the other position is deemed vacated and then it becomes vacated. And so it's not a removal. It's just, it's just a changing of the guard.
Do you see any reason to separate these three? Should we do Civic Events, Development and Planning separately? Do you see any reason to not do it all in one motion as Don has made it?
Well, I would consider it, it important to do each of them selectively since they're, they are each entitled to their own dignity. But again, the action is legally appropriate. Council has an ordinance, uh, has a resolution which, uh, which provided a procedure for uniformly changing the guard. I'm just gonna call it that. And, you know, it's being done with dignity of adhering to this procedure. No one is being removed, but the new appointee to which that newly elected council member is entitled to, uh, he, he's entitled to have his new appointee and the other person is just deemed vacated and the position is then vacant for the new appointee.
Do you have a problem breaking them up in one, two and three?
No, I just, I just did it as a slate to make it easier.
No, no, I, I think we should just add...
Yes, and Charlotte, Charlotte's got something she wants to say.
Mr. Bario, I, I believe in the concept of what you're saying is, is correct, that what you're trying to do is to protect the council from any individual disgruntled or suit or whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
You just want to follow written procedure. And what you didn't know was in 2012 that the council passed or made the resolution that upon the changing of the terms that the, these coincide, it's strictly at their will who they appoint and, uh, and it does state in the bylaws, as you stated, any director may be removed from office by majority vote of the city council at will. What, the way it's worded, possibly, uh, consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members, it does say to an unexpired term, but what you're saying that it doesn't say is to a vacancy by will of council or, or something of that nature.
There has been no vacancy created.
Well, what you don't know is there has been. That's what you don't know. Uh, and that, stop me if I'm wrong, but we're not required to share those letters with you when letters go out creating the vacancy.
No, the vacancy is created by the nomination today. Your action creates the vacancy because your action in nominating and appointing the new board member then requires that the other position which was deemed vacant becomes vacant.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right. I agree with you, but I also see where Mr. Bario is coming from and just clear to him. He was not aware of letters going out creating a vacancy.
Yes.
And I don't know how you would word it on the, differently than you have to make it a little more clear, is all I'm saying.
But may I simply suggest that in the future, when such appointments come up, uh, mention that the vacancy has happened, be it by resignation or...
I don't see a problem with putting that in the wording, in the agenda.
The resignation. I might just read the policy, the, under the council policy, I'm looking at an email that I did send, uh, you know, to the front office, I would call it, that, um, under the council policy, the position is deemed vacant by council upon the nomination and appointment by council of the new, not newly-nominated board or commission member. Um, that the policy specifically states that all, all such designation of vacated seats, nominations and appointments to advisory boards and commissions shall be deliberated and acted upon in, by council in an open meeting in compliance with applicable law. So the designation of a vacancy is by the act of council and it's sort of, there are many analogies we could use, like a new tooth coming down and replacing, the other one comes out. It, it's just, it's just a replacement. It's not a removal. It's not a resignation. It's just because council has the authority to approve these, uh, appointments, nominations and appointments, the other person just, the position is vacated. He, the other position, the person steps down.
Mayor, could I make a run at this, please?
Take a shot, Michael.
All right. Mr. Bario, your concern is that we've not created the vacancy. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
Not in accordance with what I read in city ordinances, which were, are readily accessible to the public.
Okay. We had, we recently, obviously, Ms. Bowling is up on this because we've recently had a discussion about how these vacancies are created under this new policy. And what she explained to us is that that new policy essentially gives you two actions for one action, and that is by nominating and approving that nomination of a new, uh, person for a seat, you are simultaneously vacating the seat of the old occupant and replacing them with the new occupant. Is that correct, Ms. Bowling?
Yes, absolutely.
So, uh, Mr. Bario, I think Ms. Farmer was taking us down the straight and narrow when she said, "We may have created this policy without your knowledge." Yeah, but, uh, subsequent to, uh, a lot of discussion internally, I think the action council's about to take, uh, based on the advice we've been given, is appropriate.
Yes.
That by not, by nominating and approving the nomination of these candidates, council's also vacating the seat and, uh, providing the replacement for that seat.
I would ask you, Don, if you would, to break them into one, two and three, motions and second, we'll do them one at a time. That will satisfy that.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one more thing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can we bring the city ordinances into agreement with this policy that seems to subvert the verbiage of the ordinances?
I don't see that there's a problem, John.
Okay.
I don't see that there's a problem. Each council member is responsible to appoint their board members. And when terms expire, the new council member has the responsibility and the authority to replace their board members. And it is up to the discretion of the board members when these board members are appointed, it is to the discretion of the council members when these board members are replaced. And I feel that we have, I personally feel that we have lived up to that and I agree with our legal staff. I feel that we have fulfilled all obligations of the law, sir.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Item 16A, Civic Events Board. I move that Darlene Jones be accepted to an unexpired term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council consider, council talk. Is there anything we need to say? Anything from the public? Motion has been made to, to put Darlene Jones, single member of District 5, to an unexpired term through August 214 on the Civic Events Board, all in, huh?
October.
October 214. Civic Events Board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nate? John?
Item B, Development Corporation. I move Tommy Hebert and Richard Chris be placed in those positions for unexpired terms.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have further discussion? Public discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nate?
Nay.
Okay, we have a, we have a six-one vote on that. It passes. Don?
Item 16C, Planning Commission, Terry Jackson, to an unexpired term.
Second.
Council discussion? Public discussion? All in favor of Terry Jackson, please say aye.
Aye.
Nate? Seven-oh. Now, we have moved to announcements and consideration of future agenda items, and I know that there's going to be several of them. I'm going to start with you, Winkie, and we'll just work our way down, down the council.
Yes, I have a, a new letter that I want to give the city clerk requesting three different items be put on the agenda. Items one and two are verbatim of items one and two that I attempted to put on for this meeting. They need to be placed on the open session in accordance with state law, and I will hand her a letter to this effect here in just a second. The, the third item I want on the agenda, which will be on the executive closed session, tracks state law, and it's concerning personnel, executive personnel of the City of San Angelo, and they're all listed here. And this would need to be in the agenda notice for executive sessions, and it's to consider personnel issues and any problems, well, the problems that arose from what happened last week and also any problems that might arise in the event that we have problems or placing them on the agenda again. And that's all I have.
Don?
I would like to have a presentation by staff on our half-cent sales tax and what it's, what it's going for, maybe just bringing myself as well as the new members up to, to hole on what we can do with that, what it would take to change it, just a broad overview. I'd like to look at that. And then, I'd also like to, to have a discussion on us having a, an evening meeting once a quarter, something like that, so that we can take a look at that and maybe get some participation from people that aren't able to now.
Thank you.
Charlotte?
Yes, I have four items. I want a discussion about what is or is not executive session material for council members' better understanding. I also want to discuss the inter-local agreement and money spent to date and what was approved. I would like to also talk-
On which inter-
The Hickory water.
No.
No.
I want to discuss the inter-local agreement. That is all that it is known by, is the inter-local agreement.
That's the agreement with Ab Lane and-
Tri-Cities.
Yes, but it's not called tri-cities. It's simply called inter-local agreement.
Okay, I'm with you.
West Texas.
I want that discussion as to what monies were, have been spent to date and what was approved, and I would like to have that done in open session.
Yes.
And then, I want us to talk about constant or verbiage that is on the agenda. I have noticed from time to time, it, there is not a consistency in the verbiage that we put on the agendas. A, the executive session, sometimes A is on there, sometimes B is on there, sometimes both are on there. I want to know what determines when that comes on and comes off. And also, at the bottom, like today's council meeting, there is a paragraph of verbiage that was not on the last two previous council meetings. And I'd like to know what determines that because, you know, it says, "City Council reserves the right to consider business out of posted order," blah, 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 that goes on. That's on there today, but it's not always on there. So, I want to know what makes it not consistent. All I'm asking for is consistency so that it doesn't make red flags go up to me as to what's going on or trying to be controlled as to what is talked about, and I want to talk about it openly. The other item, we've talked about long-term, short-term residence stays, and I want to make sure that the committee, the housing committee, is aware that anything over 30 days, whether it's in a hotel, an RV park, or whether it's a guest home or something like that, but anything that is a stay over 30 days is exempt from tax. And with our stays being longer and longer, have we, has that committee taken that into consideration and how do we govern and market the no-tax on that exemption? I'd like to discuss that. That's all.
Rodney?
I don't have anything.
Marty?
I would like for staff to present us what, I'd like to know what our ETJ is or as far as being able to zone or reach outside the city limits and so that with the influx of new businesses, mainly oil, that we, we know for sure what we can do and, and I want to emphasize what we can do, not, not what we can't do. I'd like to know what we can do.
Very diplomatically said. Johnny?
I'm almost positive that Ricky Dixon took the information down on the, my interest or our interest on the residential water users of 50,000 gallons and above. See what kind of numbers are there, what kind of, if we are truly in a conservative, conservative state of mind. I know a while back, I had, I had asked, and I think it was Shane Kelton that was going to get with Tracy Kane with TexDOT, because the Loop 306 and the Bryant Boulevard, just how messy it looks and dirty it looks, and of course, the weeds and everything. So, I thought that we're going to come to some kind of conclusion or some kind of meeting to see what we could do to either partner up and help clean it, clean up the area or, I don't know, what kind of ideas we're going to come out of that. So, I'd like to get an update on that.
Go ahead. I mean, when you're finished.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure what happened on, along Concho River, along the river across from the old, well, what's now being built as the little play area. There was a resident told me there were some signs put up that they weren't allowed to go down there and fish on the southern part of the river. So, just wanted to see what's going on there. These, if those signs were removed or if they still up, they were restricting folks from going down there to, to fish. So, that-
Was that Friday packet?
Friday packet on that one would be good, but I'm very much interested to see what we can do to partner with TexDOT and then the residential water users. And I'm done.
Well, I just, I wanted to clarify one thing. I thought when we moved-
I thought we left him at 80,000 and you were saying 50,000. I just want to make sure. Is it 50 or 80?
I think it's 50.
50, okay. I just, yeah.
All right. I've got a couple. In January the 3rd of 2012, we removed some guidelines from the City of San Angelo Development Corporation Guidelines for Job Creation Assistance. This is on page nine. It is entitled, "Project Eligibility Will Be Determined Based on Texas State Law Applicable to the Specific Contracting Parties." I want to read the three items that we removed by a 5-2 vote on January the 3rd, 2012. I want these three items put back in the Code of Ethics of the San Angelo Development Corporation. The items that we removed that I want replaced is this. Number one, no member of the San Angelo City Council or person related to a council member within the second degree of consanguinity or affinity shall be eligible for assistance from the COSA DC during his/her tenure or for six months thereafter. Number two, no member of the San Angelo Economic Development Corporation Board or Directors or person related to a board member within the second degree by consanguinity or affinity shall be eligible for assistance from the COSA DC during his/her tenure or for six months thereafter. Number three, no employee of the San Angelo Economic Development Corporation or person related to an employee or supervisor of the department within the second degree of consanguinity or affinity shall be eligible for assistance from the COSA DC during his/her employment or for six months thereafter. This was law. This was in our bylaws. This protected our public for years and years until we in January, on January the 3rd of 2012, we struck these three items from the eligibility guidelines. I want them all three put back in. In a future council, I will ask that the, that the Charter Review Board, the Charter Review Committee that we had in place, what's it been, three, four years ago? We had a committee appointed that went through our charter. They checked it and all of these items that need to be replaced or be renewed or to have the voters vote on, this needs to be done again. This needs to be done on a three-to-four-year basis. It's time to do it again. So, in the future, I would like for this board, in the quick future, in the near future, I would like for this board to reconvene, if possible, if they are willing, to go through the charter and possibly in the November, the May election, we could have some charter changes. And in those changes, I want these three sentences because I do not ever want anyone, any four members of this council, to change and take out this code of ethics. So, I would like that on next times of meeting. I also, in a future meeting, I'm not going to ask for it next time, but in the next two or three meetings, I would like the, a complete examination or a complete explanation of the investigation that the city did internally of the Water Department, of water billing. I asked for an external investigation. I was denied, and the city said, "We will conduct our own investigation." I want a very complex, concise examination, explanation of everything this investigation found. I want to know where every dollar of the Water Department goes, where it comes, where it goes. I want to know everything about it. I want to know about customer service. I want to know everything about the internal investigation. And you can do that and whenever, and if it's not ready, then I'll wait till it's ready, but I want that on the radar.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add something to your request there, I think it was brought to my attention, and I'm glad you, you mentioned that because we need to make sure that we are not, and the way this taxpayer explained it is, maybe we're being charged for 13 months of water for 12 months' usage. So, one knows, see if there indeed is an extra charge in there that we don't know about or maybe haven't figured out how it's working. And just, just want to throw in, in addition to yours. And then, one other thing, Rick, and, and I think maybe, I don't know if bids have gone out or not on the, the dead trees along the river, and I see those have been marked to be removed, but I didn't know what we were on that, so maybe in-
We actually have, I think it's at the next meeting is when the river project is scheduled for an update on the whole thing, which will include the trees, so we'll tell you.
Winkie?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know the protocol on this, but I note, we've just been handed a proposed agenda for the July 16th, 2013, and on the consent agenda is item number three, consideration of awarding a bid for the Hickory Groundwater Treatment Plant Facility to blank his contractor. Not knowing the protocol, I'm not ready to hear that issue, not only not to put it on the consent agenda, but not to put it on the agenda at all. And if we need to have a show of hands, we can have a show of hands, but I'm not ready to hear that and consider the bid on a groundwater treatment plant. I think a whole lot more discussion has to be made by this new council before we take that up, and so, however you want to handle that is fine with me.
I personally will agree with you.
I agree.
Don?
Yes, sir.
You got your four right there. This needs to be removed.
As a follow-up to the items that I requested for the agenda, I shouldn't have assumed, but my item number 12, that needs to be on the next agenda also, and that has to do with the Hickory and the update of the items that I'd originally requested on the 18th.
Now, just, just for clarification, this is going to be a very full agenda. Do we want everything on next one or do we want to spread these out over the next two?
Well, we've got budget. Might as well get them down the way, get all this out of the way.
We're going to be, we're not going to be through? My goal is 2:00, and we're not going to make it next time if we have all of these. So, be prepared for a four or five, you know, four or five o'clock.
Not only that, but the afternoon is scheduled for a budget meeting.
That's right. We're going to be here late. Is that what we want?
That's fine.
No, we don't.
And we want to split these up?
Yeah, I'd rather split them up, but my items, since they were postponed from the agenda once, they, mine need to be heard.
I don't mind putting mine on the next one. I don't mind putting mine in, you know, maybe, maybe y'all could get together with Alicia and let's, let's get, let's get these lined up over the next two so that-
Well, we'll just type up the list and send you an email.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. What I'll do is type up a list and send out an, out an email and give you the dates of the meetings, maybe possibly coordinate it that way on your items.
You can put mine anywhere you want it. I just want, I want mine in the next three meetings.
Okay.
So, you can put mine, so just type it up and let's, let's, otherwise, we're going to be here for a long, long time.
Alicia, you work on a pretty tight deadline on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Will you give us clear instruction on when you need that information back?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Definitely.
Michael, I have a, a request for streets. Melrose and Glen, the one that runs that, there's a two-way stop sign and I, out at the Bluffs that comes down from Rivercrest, that street, and then Melrose that comes down. There's a two-way stop, and I had requested the possibility a few years ago that there would be a four-way stop. It wasn't warranted, but since that time, the vacant lots have filled with new homes built and it has made obstruction of view. I've had a complaint from the people at the Bluffs. So, could you have someone look into possibly a four-way stop at that intersection?
That was Melrose and-
Hunter's Glen.
Hunter's Glen, thank you. I couldn't come up with Hunter's. I knew it was Glen.
Yes, sir. Don?
Alicia, you can just put mine on, on the following, and that'll be fine, on the following agenda.
Don goes to bed at 6:00, I knew I'd get his attention.
Yeah, I have to put my rooster's to roost.
I'm waiting for the very last motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, then, I'll take your second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are officially adjourned. But I'm still waiting on the 3rd of-